Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 11th, 2025. It's now 6:30 p.m. We are meeting this evening at the Willett Room in the Civic Center, 165 Manhattan Street in Norwood, Massachusetts. This was a late change in location due to the closing of Town Hall due to heating issues. So we're here this evening, and we'll conduct all our business from this location. Before I introduce tonight's agenda, as is our tradition, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silent reflection. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do also apologize in advance. We are at the Civic Center, and I think above us is a potentially a dance class, so we will hear some noise from above here and there, but they will not interrupt our conducting of business. So this evening, we have a full agenda. This evening, we have the warrant signature update. We have two appointments with the town clerk, as well as the chief of police and the chief of fire department. We have a number of approvals to review regarding the use of the Town Common, some permits and some adoptions of some, and we have some information that we will be speaking about this evening as well. And at the end of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting, we also have our FY26 General Government Budget Preparation, presentation, rather. That's the general government, our first opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to review with the general manager, the FY26 general budget as it stands today. And we have cemetery deeds. We will have an executive session this evening. When we get to that point at the end of the meeting, we will go into the executive session, and we will come out of the executive section only for the purpose of adjourning the meeting, adjourning the meeting, so stay tuned. For the first article of, for tonight's warrant is Article Number One, Item Number One, rather. Warrant Signature Update Submitting Notification of the Reviewed and Approved Warrant Reports Signed by the Board's Representative. May I have a motion?
Motion, file and accept and file. Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Delane. Is there any discussion, seeing that we'll have to do a roll call vote? Mr. Sad is here this evening on remote, so we are calling our votes by roll call. On the motion, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. And we will go into a couple of items. Our first appointment is 6:45. We have approximately 10 minutes to get through some new business, so we will proceed to new business, and then we'll convene for our 6:45 appointment. Item 3.1, under New Business. It's a 5K road race request from St. Catherine's of Siena Road Race Committee submitting a request to hold a road race on Saturday, May the 10th, 2025, at approximately 9:00 a.m. The race will begin in the front of 239 Railroad Avenue, then proceed north on Railroad, right on Fulton, left on Myrtle, left on Prospect, coming right onto Vernon, left on Harthorne, right on Lincoln, making a loop on Spruce with the same streets leading back to Railroad Avenue. I'm exhausted just reading the description. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, a roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Item 3.2, Car Wash for the Norwood High School Field Hockey Team. Submitting a request to hold a car wash at the municipal lot on Saturday, July the, July the 12th, 2025, from 8:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. May I have a motion?
Motion, approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. On the motion, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Carry five, nothing. Item 3.3. This is the Town Common Use. The Norwood Art Association is submitting a request to use the Town Common on Saturday, June the 7th, 2025, with a rain date of June 8th, for the annual Art in the Park event. The event will involve 30 participants submitting artwork, as well as vendors with tables. There will be tables, chairs, and a few tents. The hours of the event will be 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., with approximately 50 to 75 attendees expected. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Ms. Delane.
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. I just note that's part of the description is that they're looking for something to be delivered. I think that's, you know, this is a pretty much an annual event, so I'm assuming that that's done by DPW, and they know it, that can we just make sure we send them that off, that department, a notice of this date so they can put on their calendar?
Yes.
And they'll touch base with the eye council?
Okay, that's very good. Christine, would you mind contacting DPW regarding that?
Yes, Mr. Delane, that's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Item 3.4 is also a Town Common Use. It's a marriage ceremony.
Chairman, point of admission?
Yes. Did I did not take a vote, did we? Sorry, Mr. Plasko.
Whoa.
Thank you for that. So the Norwood Art Association request for the common usage on June 7th, 2025, has been moved and seconded. I will now call the roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We got it done. All right. 3.4, also a Town Common Use Request for a Marriage Ceremony. Submitting a request to use the Town Common on Tuesday, February the 25th, 2025, for a small wedding ceremony from 2:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m., with no more than 25 guests expected.
That's two days before my wedding anniversary, and I wouldn't be planning on doing it outside. But God bless.
We looked at the date and said...
Yeah.
Motion approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment? Let's hope for good weather. On the motion, roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Congratulations to the wedding couple. Good luck with the weather. We now have still a few minutes to go before our 6:45. We have another common Town Common Use. You can tell that spring and better weather is just around the corner. 3.5, it's a Town Common Use Request from the Norwood Recreation Department. Submitting a request to use the Town Common in Dempsey Bandstand for Norwood Day, September the 6th, 2025, from 5:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. This request includes the closure of Washington and Central Streets. 5,000 attendees are expected. Never too early to plan for Norwood Day. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Seconded by Ms. Grow. Any discussion on 3.5? I'll call the roll. On the motion, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And chair votes yes as well. Moving on to 3.6. Town Common Use Norwood Recreation Department. Norwood Recreation Department is really getting ahead of the game here, getting everything lined up for usage. That's great. The Norwood Recreation Department is submitting a request to use the Town Common in Dempsey Bandstand for the 2025 Holiday Extravaganza on Sunday, November the 30th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m., with approximately 1,500 guests expected. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Happy holidays. Early. On the motion, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Carries five, nothing. Five more minutes. We have a few more approvals to go through before we start our public hearing. 3.7, it's a Town Common Use Officer Jeffrey Buguma?
Buguma.
Buguma, thank you, Mr. Plask, Mr. Mizuko. Submitting a request to use the Town Common and Dempsey Bandstand for the annual Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, from 12:30 p.m. until 3:30 p.m., with approximately 300 guests, 300 attendees expected. What is the pleasure of the board?
Of approval.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Grow.
Just on the motion.
Yes, Ms. Delane.
This is great. Was there any consideration to doing it on the actual date, which I think would be a Friday, right, Mr. Mizuko? Yeah, they've historically done it on the Saturday for that event, just because even though it's a federal and state holiday, it's not a bank holiday in a lot of places, so there's not sort of universal time off. Maybe someday. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so this has been moved and seconded. On 3.7, Town Common Use for Juneteenth, I will take the roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five, nothing carried. 3.8, Town Common Use Patriotic Rosary Submitting a Request to Use the Town Common in Dempsey Bandstand for the annual recitation of the Patriotic Rosary on Thursday, July the 3rd, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. until 2:00 p.m. May I have a, what is the pleasure of the board?
Of approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on 3.8? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, five, nothing. And 3.9, it's a Banner Placement and Street Closure Request, the Fourth of July Committee. One, Submitting a Request to Place a Banner on the Polls on Washington Street from June 5th, 2025, to advertise the Fourth of July Parade and Festivities. Two, Submitting a Request to Close Washington Street from south of the middle school, Mylod Street, to Town Hall on July the 4th, 2025, beginning at 4:00 p.m. for the Firecracker 5K Road Race and lasting until the parade ends around 7:00 p.m. Should make us all feel nice and warm that we actually have summertime activities that we're approving this evening. What is the pleasure of the board?
A motion approved.
Seconded by Ms. Grow?
Well, the question, you said four, but is it actually 4:30, because I see 4:30 written in the...
4:30, correction. Yes.
Yep.
Beginning at 4:30 p.m. and lasting until 7:00, when the parade ends around 7:00 p.m. Thank you for that clarification.
Then second.
Moved and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote on 3.9. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Ms. Delane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. At this time, I'm going to invite the town clerk up to the table, and we'll open the public hearing momentarily.
Good evening.
All right, right on time. We're right on time. Welcome, welcome. How are you tonight, Mary Lou, Ms. Folen?
Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to ask, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will ask Ms. Woodward to read the hearing notice, and then we'll go into the public hearing. Christine, if you would, please.
The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing to consider opting out of vote by mail for the annual town election. The hearing will take place on Tuesday, February 11, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. in the Harry Byers Chambers, 566 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. The hearing will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 54, Section 25b.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Well, I'll just open with Ms. Folen, if you have some opening remarks, and we'll take it from there.
I do, thank you. Thank you for having us. And tonight, this is my assistant, Patricia Ralph, known as Tricia.
Good evening.
And I thank you for having us here. So we're really just trying to maybe ask you to consider opting out, to consider the opting out method of vote by mail. And some of the points that I wanted to make was, back in 2024, the state covered all the cost to mail out the applications that were sent out that whole year. And in, as of April of last year, we had 3,368 people request ballots, which included the local election, which was held in April. And the cost to mail out those ballots was around $2,323. And we only received back 1,244 of those ballots, which was like a third of what we had sent out. And the turnout for the town election typically is low, and in 2024, with the ballots that were mailed out, we only had a 12% turnout for the local election. 2023, we only had a 13% turnout. So this is just some of the years that, you know, what we had and stuff. Last year, like I said, all the voters received an application, which was paid by the state. And if we would do that, if we were to do that again this year, it costs approximately, the cost would probably be around $16,000 if we did mail out one to every single voter in the town. The reason we're here tonight is because we had to hold this hearing within a timeframe, so that's why we were asking for this to be held. It had to be held 45 days before the election. So that's why we're here tonight, to hold the hearing. And that's basically, I just wanted to bring up some points about it. If you have any questions?
I'll open up to the board for any questions and comments. Ms. Delane?
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Thank you for being here and putting us together.
Thank you.
Could you maybe expand in detail what that $16,000, what that would compromise? I'm assuming labor hours, materials, things like that?
Yeah, labor hours, the cost of just, that probably is just the cost of mailing out the applications.
Just literally the cost of mailing.
The applications themselves, right.
So it doesn't take...
Envelopes, and the postage to mail the applications out. And then how, according to however many we get back, each ballot to mail out is approximately 97 cents to a dollar of the, however many we get back that we have to mail to the voters.
Okay.
Yeah.
If a voter has been using mail-in option for several elections, and it's not available for its upcoming one, what are the options?
The options would be an absentee voter. You could have requested absentee ballot, I should say. Absentee ballot is almost the same as a vote by mail ballot. It's almost the same. I've never refused anybody to vote absentee, nor have I ever asked them what the reason being is that they are going to vote absentee.
If they were to want to do an absentee voter, how would they go about doing it?
They, there's an application on the website that they can download, or they can call us. We can mail an application, or they can come up to our office and vote right in person over the counter. And the deadline to vote absentee would be 4 o'clock on that Friday before the election. That's in person. And the deadline to have a ballot mailed is five days before the election, to have it mailed out through the mail.
Kind of jumped the gun there a little bit. I should have deferred to my comments, questions, Ms. Grow. Mr. Plasko, I'll turn to you next. Ms. Grow?
One question I had was, I know the ballot for the absentee and for the mail are basically the same. Is the timing different between the two?
No, it isn't. No. They have, like I said, anything through the mail, whether it be vote by mail or absentee, it's, I believe it's five days before the election for it to be mailed. And then, like I said, they have up until, to vote absentee in person in the office is 4 o'clock on that Friday before the election.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Correct me when I say something wrong. Didn't the Secretary of State's office send out something, a card that said, if you want to vote by mail, got to get it into your town clerk by a certain date?
Correct.
And an option was, you just wanted the presidential state, or you want it all?
All elections, yep.
So that was for last year. Does that have to be done every year?
Yes.
So has that been done this year, and I missed it?
No.
So would you have to do that?
We would have to do that. That's why we're, you know, we're here tonight.
And I guess...
That would have to be done.
Because we only have the one election.
Correct, yes. We're still waiting to hear back from the state, but we would have to do that.
Okay, I'm a little torn, because I understand we don't want to spend money we don't need to spend in the work on the department when you don't feel you're getting return. But I also have the philosophy of trying to make things as open as possible for people to participate. And when I look at the numbers, again, I lost them, got something wrong here. You mailed out 3,300 ballots for the town election. 1,200 were returned. 2,200 voted, which means 50% took advantage of the mail-in.
Vote by mail.
And, you know, it's always, it was only a 12% turnout.
Mm-hmm.
What are we going to get if we make things more difficult for people to turn out? We're already trying to find ways of encouraging voting, not discouraging voting.
Exactly.
So that concerns me a lot. And there's cost, obviously a cost concern, especially with the way budgets are going in the near future here, but is there other ways of offsetting that? For example, if the, if our turnouts are so low, why aren't we cutting, maybe considering cutting the number of precincts? Not the precincts necessarily, but the locations where those precincts vote? And couldn't we save police officers, poll workers, and so forth if we narrowed that down?
Narrowed it down, yeah. I mean, that would be something we'd have to...
I mean, I've always felt we could do with less physical voting locations. I think the challenge would be...
Might be too late for this year, but if we talk, but if we talk long term...
Yeah, I think that the concern would be that when you then have a presidential election, are you expanding back up to that? Because that's what we always sort of...
Overdrive, some big issue.
Exactly, so you're right. For a local election, we could have everyone go to Town Hall for a local election, it would be fine. The volume wouldn't be a problem. But then the next year, when we go from 14%, and incidentally, our low local turnout is the same across the Commonwealth of the country. We're no different than anyone else.
Right.
But you go from 14% to 60%, and all of a sudden, you're seeing that, that volume become significant. The cost is a factor. We always want to bring options for the cost. I think it's just looking at, is the, you know, 3,300 sent out and 1,200 come back? And that's part of the problem. If 3,200 came back, I think nobody would even have a question. Of course, it's been successful. Do we spend the resources and the effort to get that one-third back? And to your point about, it was 50% in the local election, would those people have not voted? And that's the question nobody's ever going to ask. So it's, it's about the cost, but it's really about, is this effective for doing it at the return that we're seeing?
Go to Mike first. Mr. Sad, any questions or comments that you'd like to...
Just a, it's a quick question. I'm not, I'm kind of like with Bill. I think we're trying to promote people to get into vote, make it easier. But I think if the board decides to ax it, maybe put an ad in the paper stating that there's a way to go around that with absentee ballot, just to let them know. A lot of people don't go on the computer like myself, so it makes it a little easier for them. So just more public information, or maybe an ad in the local paper, or some type of something that's simple that says, come get absentee ballot at Town Hall, recall us and request it. And that's it.
We could ax, absolutely do that.
Mr. Delane? Oh, Mr. Mizuko, sorry.
One additional point, again, it's, it's an interesting process. We probably got, would you say, 100, 150 calls through the office, people not asking, not understanding why Elizabeth Warren wasn't on the ballot for the last local election. So there's a certain amount of confusion that comes along with the local election process. And maybe another 100 people showed up that day with their mail-in ballot. I, it's an interesting phenomenon, but people show up to the polls with their mail-in ballots, and I'll have it here, can I just vote anyway? Or they've requested it, they don't have it, but they still want to vote. And of course, they're still allowed to vote, so I think it's just about that, does it cause more confusion? Maybe it's still too early, and five years from now, we'll all be used to it, but there's often mass confusion with the local, local election. Why can't I vote for my senator? Or, you know, why can't I vote for president?
Right.
Mr. Delane?
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. I know that your office has a nice network of people that do this job in other municipalities. Just wondering if you've spoken with other town clerks, what other towns are doing?
I...
Not that we need to follow other towns.
Right, right. I have not, to be honest with you, I haven't.
Yeah.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I mean, I could find out, you know, how people are handling it and stuff. I could find that out.
Yeah.
Easily.
So I think the things that I'm taking away from the conversation is, one, people could still, if they want a ballot mailed to them, you just have to do it absentee.
Absentee, correct.
And...
Either have it nailed or come into our office, either one.
Right, right. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm inclined to, at least at this point, see how this goes, because, you know, we can take a look at the numbers after this, assuming maybe we decided not to do it for this election, and it could be exactly the same. I mean, those 1,200 people that did do the mail-in, those are, seem like probably motivated voters, and I'm assuming that they, those would be the types of people who would engage your office to get the absentee ballot.
And because last year was a presidential year, we had the presidential primary ahead of the town election.
Yeah.
So I think that's why we had so many people just check all election.
Right.
And I think that's why...
So you're saying there's too many elections?
Yeah.
Not this year.
Usually?
Not this year, there isn't.
I agree.
Do you have anything to add, Tricia Ralph?
No, I think, you know, I mean, whatever you decide, the clerks' office will do whatever you want us to do.
Exactly.
But, you know, given, given that the turnout is, you know...
Lower than a normal.
Low. And it hasn't changed much over the year, even, even, you know, we've always kind of had the same average of people before we ever had early voting, you know? So I just, I don't know if it's, like, from, from my perspective, it's, it's a lot to get not a great, not a great improvement in, in turnout.
Yeah.
I mean, even the whole early voting thing, for, for our department, the turnout has just been spread over, like, when you have early voting in person, the turnout's been spread, it's the same amount of people.
It's the same turnout.
They just do it over a two-week period.
Two-week period, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Delane. So let's say we, we were to adopt this and not do the mail-in voting, and we go into 2026, which is a state gubernatorial election.
Right.
What happens? Is the Secretary of State going to issue those cards?
They probably are, however, I don't know the timing of it next year. That's what I'm going to have to look at right away.
But you would, normally, and normally, the Secretary of State would send that out, and you would have the option for...
Signing up for it, right.
Signing up for mail-in voting, so that...
Thing coming up with next year, I just don't know when the time, when they will send the postcards out.
Yeah.
Because of the fact it's a...
So that means you'll have to do it next year.
Right.
Yeah, it's local election only, just if you didn't admit that, this is only the town's annual election.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, but my concern is that we have to, following up on that question, if I may, Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Next year, we're going to have to do it.
Yes.
You will have people that respond, so you're going to have to do this. So we're going to do it one year and not the next year?
Right, yet that's, you know...
You bet, that's the direction of my question, yeah.
I mean, we can see not doing it this year to see, to follow up, as Ms. Delane had said, and see how we want to do. But what is the basis of that if every other year, we're going to have to be doing this? Because people are always going to respond to the state's mail-in.
We can opt out next year if we want to, we can opt out.
Yeah, we'd have to go through the same process next year if we did want to opt out, for the local election. Only because, like I said, I don't know what the timing is going to be. I assume that the, the state will send out the postcards next year, I just don't know the timing, like I said. I'm not sure.
Ms. Grow?
Have we, or do you even know of any other clerks who've ever done any upward lobbying to, it's weird to me that the state will do mail voting, but then the absentee isn't no-fault absentee? And so why wouldn't they just simplify that process? Because like, even though we know and trust you...
Exactly.
You voters who moved here, they're like, well, I don't know how much of a stickler the clerk in this town is.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I need to prove that I'm not going to be here.
I don't, I've been saying that for years, that they should just combine the whole thing, which actually...
COVID kind of messed everything up.
Yeah, it was COVID that this all started.
Because they had been talking about making absentee available to everyone.
Right.
And then COVID happened, and because changing absentee was like a legislative change, there wasn't enough time.
Yeah.
So then, vote... So then vote by mail was introduced.
That's how it was introduced.
It would be much easier for the clerk's office.
It was.
With all one application.
With just one application.
And one envelope, because it's all different.
Because even the ballot says, you know, mail or absentee.
Absentee or vote by mail.
Or you described earlier, if, if the Secretary of State should use the same process, sends out the card, a person indicates, I want state and local mail-in. We would still have the opportunity to opt out if we wanted to prior, or we would be.
Not.
No, we wouldn't. That would be, that would be confusing.
Because if I could, next year, I'm guessing they'll send them out in Jan, in July, because the election's not until September.
See, next year's election's out until the fall. So they might not send cards out until June or July of next year.
Oh, past August.
Before the fall.
Yeah, past election.
Which would be past the election. Right.
Do you have a sense of not exact number of how many, I'll call them spoiled ballots. I don't know if I have the right terminology. In other words, don't people have to sign it? Are there people not signing it? Do you have anything that made the mail-in ballots invalid? No?
No. I mean, we don't know.
If somebody did sign their envelope or something, we're calling them usually.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we have to.
If somebody doesn't sign their mail-in envelope, we're calling them personally, so.
Yeah, if they don't sign their envelope, we have to return it and they usually return it back to us and stuff.
So it has to be back on time?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or again, that's when they could even go to the polls. If they've got to sign their ballot, we mail it back to them, then they could go to the polls. Or return it to us by eight o'clock that night. Let's catch.
And what's the timeframe again? In other words, are you necessarily looking for a decision tonight? About 35 days.
It could be like 45 days.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we would need a vote tonight, because it's 45 days before the election.
Right.
Which is the end of this month.
Too late to consider this two weeks from now.
Right, exactly.
What's, what's that number of days before they want them to mail out? You're mailing out?
No, we have to, that's why we had to have the hearing. We have to vote on this, the opt-out solution.
Now you have to send out to me a request whether I want it, wanted it, not right?
Correct, yes, correct.
What's the timeframe for that?
I'm sorry. What was your question, Bill? I'm sorry.
I think he's asking whether we, if we, if we don't do this, if we're still doing the mail-in voting, when will we be sending out the cards, asking people if they want a ballot?
As soon as.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as we get them.
A week or two.
Yeah, as soon as we get them printed up.
Ms. Sherrill, I just had one more question.
Yes, Ms. Lane?
To that point, have we already budgeted an amount for this, for that process for this election?
We're probably run over on the postage and some of the other costs. Nothing that we couldn't handle with an end-of-the-year transfer or a transfer at town meeting or the reserve fund transfer. Again, the total dollar amount, the scope of the budget is not significant. We wouldn't worry about finding it. We'll be able to find it. It's just, is it worth what we know is a low-turnout process? That's why we wanted to bring it to everyone. Is it worth it for a third? I mean, if our, most of our boards and committees, only a third of the members showed up, or if a third of town meeting members showed up, the number's not great. But it's not going to, you know, the world's not going to end one way or another.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sad.
Just a quick question from Mary Lou. Is there, is there, are they going to have like three weeks before the election for these ballots absentee to people who walk in Memorial Hall or their postiers?
No, we're not doing any early voting in person, so to speak, in Memorial Hall. Anybody can come into our office and vote in person, into our office directly.
During your business hours.
During business hours, correct.
But they want absentee ballot?
Same thing, in the office.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody can come into our office and vote absentee. As soon as we get the ballots in, hopefully that'll be around the second week of March, as soon as we have them. Anybody can come anytime during business hours.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any final comments, questions from the board? So this is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open up the, is there any member of the com, is any member of the public here this evening that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Why don't you stand up, please, and tell us your name and ask your question or your comment?
Yes, I'm Steve Connetti from Free Harrow Road. I've got a couple of things. First, first one is a question. I know that we keep track of whether or not, or the names of the people that have voted. So do we know how many people that requested a mail-in ballot and didn't send it back in, whether they voted in person anyways?
Specifically, you mean if they got the ballot and then they went to the polls?
Yeah, they decided that they weren't going to mail in the ballot, but yet they went in person anyway. I'm just trying to look at to see if, if it's a hardship thing and they, they couldn't make it, so they didn't vote at all? Or if they ended up voting anyways, then it's really a non-issue.
No, I had a lot of people at early voting who said to me that they got the mail-in ballot in case they wouldn't be able to get to the polls. Or in case they wouldn't, but they liked to vote in person. But it was their backup ballot.
That makes it sound a little less of an urgent matter.
Right.
But the other thing is that with the low voter turnout, we really should try to encourage more people to vote. This is a little bit of a discouragement, but maybe not. But what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see more of those sidewalk sandwich signs around town. Because I really haven't seen too many of them. I know that they have one on the common and they've got one down on, at the Chapel Street Park. I don't know where the other ones are.
If I, if I may, Mr. Connetti, we did get a request this, this evening, earlier today, for the, from an organization requesting those signs.
Oh.
For the local elections, so.
Okay. Do you know how many we're going to have?
I don't have the email right in front of me, but the, usually there are at least a half dozen throughout the, mostly the downtown Washington corridor.
Okay.
But yeah, that, that has been requested.
Okay. What about the possibility of doing something a little bit bigger, like maybe a reminder email out to residents? Or at least the residents that you have emails for, or a reverse 911, or maybe even a billboard, reminding people about the voting.
On the reverse 911, we did that during COVID. It does two things. One, it was very unpopular. We got a lot of angry complaints. Why is the town calling us about an election? It's a weirdly cultural issue thing in certain towns. Westwood does it for everything. We rarely do them. And I think because we rarely do them, we get a negative response. It also jams up the switchboard at town hall, which is not a big deal, but we've done reverse 911 for elections in the past. We end up getting a fair amount of complaints about it. I don't think it would hurt, but I just remember the last time you were told. We get more people telling us to take us off the list when we do that than we do. Again, it's a, it's an us thing.
Well, I know that when I get a reverse 911 call telling me that the trash either isn't or is going to be picked up, I, I look at that as a good thing.
The, the trash is different. There could be a meteor that hits Boston and the first question people ask us is trash, right? Honest to God, that is a sacred, a holy grail. We can, I mean, we can certainly try the reverse 911 this year. I know we got yelled at it before. We can definitely get more sandwich signs out. It never hurts. It's just sometimes it's discouraging year after year. Local election turnout is flat across the Commonwealth.
I think we have used in the, in the past, and I could be wrong about this, but we do have the electronic billboard that's placed at the, on Washington Street.
At the center on Washington Street there, yeah.
That is used for such.
That's usually around the weekend, a couple of weeks before or so. And then we also put the big sign out in front of the town hall. There's also one down at the Balch. So, you know, we have those signs out too.
I guess I could sum up our concern is, I'm sorry.
I'm done, thank you.
Trying to encourage rather than discourage voting. But then again, if we look at these numbers for the last few years that you provided us, we went from an 18% turnout to a 13% turnout to a 12% turnout. And then, and the 12% was the year we were offering this voting.
Correct.
So I'm not sure it's the method of voting so much as the candidates, the issues, whether people.
The 18% was the year we had.
The election they're going to turn out or not.
Yes, Mary Lou was saying, just at 18% was the COVID.
COVID middle school question is on there.
Yeah, that, that 12 to 15 seems to be.
Yeah.
And that's not uncommon with certain towns. Just, I want to make sure everyone knows that. I've seen as low as a 2.5% turnout in Mansfield one year, where they had one person running for one seat in the selectmen, one person running for one seat in the school committee, and it was terrible. So I know we're all, we're collectively disappointed in those numbers. It's, we're as bad as everyone else around us.
Yeah. Again, a public hearing. Is there any other member of the public here this evening that would like to speak on the, on the topic? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second, if I, Ms. Groh. On the motion to close the public hearing, Ms. Groh?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's five-nothing carry. We'll move on to a motion. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, we got to get something voted up or down.
I'm just looking for the language.
Make a motion to waive matters as they are and not to waive the mail-in balloting.
I, I, I think the motion would be a no, take no action on.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
And. Can I speak to that for a moment?
Yes, on the motion, Mr. Plasko.
We already had a discussion with a lot of questions and feelings both, both ways. I could easily go either way, but I think the one that finally sticks with me that I therefore made the motion is the potential of confusion to the voters. And Mr. Mizuko mentioned that people seem confused. They ask for the ballot, but then they still come out on election day with the ballot in hand, say, what do I do with it? Instead of having returned it. Maybe over time, people will get a little more educated and that won't, type of thing won't happen. But the additional confusion I mentioned, one year we're going to have it, one year we're not going to have it. And we are going to have it every other year because the state's going to do this. So I can't see changing things from year to year. Same as we can't change precincts from one election to the other. It needs some consistency so the voters know what's going on. So as much as I can try to make an argument the other way too, I believe in the end, I think this is the proper way.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Sherrill. I was more inclined to maybe eliminate this option for this election, see how it goes, come back with numbers, have a further discussion. But I, I see Mr. Plasko's point too. And, and I think, you know, he makes a strong case. I, I, you know, one of the things that was brought up was maybe in future town elections, maybe when it's just the sole April town election, having less precincts open, things like that. I like, I like that we're having these conversations about maybe how to be a little more efficient and, you know, sort of eliminate some of these redundancies maybe at, at having so many precincts open, things like that. But being mindful that we don't want to limit access for people. And I think one of the things that made me comfortable taking the mail-in option away this year is how you explained that essentially the absentee ballot would work the same way. But there might be some confusion on that part, even though we could message to people, this is how, you know, if, if you want to mail in, call it an absentee, we'll do it in advance. You know, that might be an additional barrier. So I'm, I'm fine with, if the group, it seems like leaving it as is might be the way to go. And I, if we're in agreement, no, I think that would be good.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Groh?
And on Mr. Plasko's motion, I don't think it precludes us from doing some lobbying to the state, to the secretary about things like, hey, you know, COVID is over. Now we should get back to making the absentee work like a no-fault absentee. Or, hey, can we get some funding to cover this initiative? Maybe we can find some money through the Help America Votes Act or any number of things. So I don't think we should sort of leave it be. I think we should try to go up and bring some of the data we have, network maybe with a couple of other clerks and go, hey, we really need to see some movement on this for local elections. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. Mr. Sad, yes?
Yeah, I agree with Bill and Matt. I think that for the short amount of money, I know it's a lot of extra work for the town clerk and their staff. But I think just have consistency and try it and let's see what happens one more year maybe. And if not, then go back and revisit it again, see if we have a different plan.
Thank you, Mr. Sad.
And, and sorry, Ms. Sherrill.
Mr. Lane?
And I think it would be good to hear maybe what other towns are doing too. I know that, you know, everyone's pressed for time, so just maybe at a future date, coming back and letting us know if there are other municipalities that took this route. Because it's not, you know, something we have to close the door on. We can have this conversation again.
Right, okay.
The other.
Yes, Mr. Plasko.
You know, back to my point about confusion, I think another way people get confused is they receive these notices, that's every other year, and they return it. So this year, they just assume they're going to be receiving it. And then the election comes and goes and they never even got the ballot or this, they're going to come to, how come I didn't get my ballot? I think, again, one way or the other, whatever you choose, needs to be consistent. And with the state fighting us by doing it the other way every other year, I think we have to be consistent that way.
It's probably all going to be on our phones at some point anyways.
No, they'll add that option and then we'll still have absentee. We'll still have mail-in and we'll still have early voting. That, that's, they just seem to keep adding and not consolidating. At the board, oh, sorry.
So, Ms. Ralph, Ms. Ralph, thank you so much for, for coming in. I just wanted to compliment you. You really put forward good data, information in regards to the, the work and the expense that's needed for mail-in voting. So I really appreciate the information that's provided. And I was really conflicted, but I do believe that in a sensitive board, I, I, I'm in agreement with that. I, I think there's a, maybe a little bit confusing at this point where we would not have mail-in voting here and then leave next year up. So in the interest of consistency and, and, you know, offering that option to folks going forward for all elections, and I think that's, I think that's where I'm at as well. Did you have any, I'm sorry, did I, Ms. Ralph?
No, no, we're good.
Okay. Okay, so a motion from Mr. Plasko. The motion is take no action. If there's no further comment, I'll call the roll call vote. On the motion to take no action, a yes vote would be take no action, just to be clear. Ms. Groh?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And board votes yes as well. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Very much. Thank you for listening to us. Thanks.
Yes. So at this point, we are running a little bit behind and I apologize to Chief Bailey and Chief Patton, but I know you're behind me. So you're welcome to come to the front of the table. I, I sense your presence.
We were hiding in the hallway.
Chief, Chief Patton, you are a difficult person to be hiding, I, I sense.
I told that.
Good evening, chiefs. How are you this evening?
Great.
So this is our regularly scheduled appointment with the public safety chiefs for the purpose of providing the selectmen with a review and update, reports from the two departments. And I'm going to yield the table to you. I don't know if you want to flip a coin. Chief Patton, looks like you.
Sure. Looks like I've been assigned the first position, so. You know, a lot's been going on. We're at the end of our, our year, you know. I know we didn't meet up in February, but numbers from the last year across the board for our calls for service were pretty consistent. 2023 was 41,591. 2024 went to 42,196. So we're, we're still extremely busy. That works out to, you know, if you just average it out, 115 calls a day, a day. And roughly 4.8 calls per hour, 365 days a year. Some days are busier than others and that's all of our calls. That could be an alarm call. It could be, you know, breaking and entering, could be a domestic. That's everything. So we've been pretty consistently busy across the board, so things have been good there. Our arrest numbers are, you know, a, a little bit down, which is, you know, could be a million different factors that factor in there. Our motor vehicle stuff is a little bit down. You know, but we're still averaging, I think, 900, roughly 900 responses to motor vehicle accidents. So we're, we're back from that post-COVID timeframe. And, you know, things are going to probably continue to move in a direction where we're fairly busy. Obviously, you know, you guys are in Nold every day. It's a busy town. There's a lot going on. You know, the crime, we're, you know, we try and keep it at bay, but you know, there are things that just happen. In addition to that, in January, we rolled out the body camera program. I'm wearing one right now. All of our officers are currently wearing body cameras. I know we, we've talked about this over and over again, but we have implemented it. It's completely online. Started probably third week in January. I think we got everybody up to speed. It's been working out great. The equipment's been great. The officers have adjusted to it. You know, every time they go to a call, they'll turn on their body camera and after. You know, every time they go to a call, they'll turn on their body camera and after the call, they have to put a label on it, which you can all do on the unit itself, which is helpful. Then it all goes into the system. I spoke to the manager the other day, within two days of having it up to speed, we had an officer make a motor vehicle stop. The person felt that he was stopped for an inappropriate reason, made a complaint to the post, Massachusetts Post Agency, who contacted us. We sent the video in, the officer was completely professional, and they washed it out within two hours. So it was really, it was very helpful. So those kinds of things, it's all, you know, the calls are all on tape, you know, there's no question about he said or she said, so it's very helpful as far as that goes. We had our MARK accreditation with the Massachusetts Accreditation Commission. As you guys know, we're an accredited police department, we're, out of the 395 police agencies in the state of Massachusetts, there are 112 that are accredited and we are one of them. So every three years, we have to go through an accreditation, a reaccreditation process where they come in, they look at all of our policies, they make sure we're living up to the standards that we're supposed to. And that'll be in, sometime in June, where the assessors will come in for the actual accreditation. This is what we call a MARK, so it's like a practice run. The Accreditation Commission sends in a group, they come through our stuff, it's like a soft run-through. And we did, you know, we zip through that with flying colors. So we expect full reaccreditation in June, so that's very exciting. So I think that's about it. Questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board? Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was, my impression is that things are still going good with the, oh, about the same question for both of you essentially, that things are still going good with the call center. I know that sometimes there can be a little bit of, you know, working out the case as you make that transition, but my impression is that it's gone very well. And is that your impression too?
Yeah, so there are always gonna be, there's always gonna be feedback that, you know, oh, they're not doing one thing, or, you know, a lot of times, the officer's perception sometimes is that it was better one way, or it's better this way. It's really pretty much the same. We have the same problems we had before with certain types of calls. They are going through a growth period over there, they're taking on some other towns, so we're not getting the same dispatchers every single time. But I listen to the radio every day and I know Chief Bailey does as well, I've found them to be professional. They make mistakes, it happens. Our own dispatchers, when they were here in town, made mistakes. You know, I don't think it was the wrong move to make at the time, because we would have been in the process of having to retrain and bring in new because we were gonna have retirements and people falling out of the system. And now that's off of our plate. And that organization is solely focused on dispatching. And I think the technology and everything that they have.
Keeping up with the tech would have been hard.
The tech is a big thing, you know, just before this all went, we had redone the dispatch center and the keeping up with the training. And then one of the things that we had to do was for officers, police officers to sit the desk, they had to retrain 40 hours of 911 training every year, so that was a training drain for us. And then that officer might not be on the desk once, but once every three months. And that skill level is, it's perishable. So in my opinion, and I'll let Chief Bailey speak for himself, I think that it was the right move and, you know, nothing's perfect, but I think it's a good product and it's been well worth it.
Glad to hear that. And then the officers that I see in the community, when I see them out with the residents, I'm still seeing excellent work out there.
Great.
So just wanted to commend you and your officers on the work they're doing in the town.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Plasko?
Just follow, I think one follow-up on that, on the dispatching and so forth. Do we have any records that are kept of mistakes in a way to try to make sure they're not, don't happen again? For example, does somebody call up and they think it's Norwell instead of Norwood or something?
No, absolutely. So what happens is, is we have multiple layers. So they have dispatch supervisors over there, we have a sergeant that's on during the day, and then we'll have our operations commander, who's Lieutenant Jay Payne. And they're always working back and forth when something needs to be fixed. You know, one of the biggest things that comes up is officers might get dispatched to the wrong area. So if you're the C car and you get dispatched to a call that's in the area D, then, you know, we'll try and get that resolved, because a lot of times, it's might be on a border between two areas, so one officer should really handle it. You know, over the years, when I was a patrolman, the response by the sergeant was always the patch says Norwood, so even though it's a C call and a D call, just go, you know? And so that's one of the things that does happen and we work on that. So we're not, we're not seeing major problems that we have to keep like a log of. And one of those issues as far as the dispatching to different areas, it's because our IMC database over the years, when a street was in area C instead of area D, was never corrected over time because the, you know, the person either knew or the officers would speak up and, and they'll speak up. If it's a D call, the D car will call, speak up and say, hey, that's my call, I'll take it, that type of thing. So that's really the biggest extent of the issue that we've had. I don't really have anything off the top of my head that, now that the database is all together and done and that we're there and we've been there for a period of time, there was some growing pains as far as certain procedural things, like when to send two officers, when to send one officer, things like that. But I think they've done a pretty good job getting used to us as far as how we operate. So, so like you said, I'm pleased.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, I'll just very quickly, thank you for your continued leadership and thank you for attending the hospital community meeting that was held, and thank you. And I'm sure you'll be involved with those conversations as they progress, so we appreciate the teamwork there.
My pleasure.
Mr. Sad, do you have any questions for Chief Patton?
I always have a question for the chief and the coach. Hi, Coach.
Hi, how are you?
Chief, just a couple of calls on maybe the people speeding, especially through the salt Norwood strip in the uptown. You know, they called me a little bit saying that people run through red lights and just maybe we could put some, some people at certain few spots randomly that might work a little bit, see what you can do, that would be great.
Can you give me some specific spots that you're hearing complaints from so that I can?
In front of the bald school and in front of the pause pool.
You got it.
Because they come down the hill and they just keep going right, right through the light.
Yep.
But that's it, give up the great job.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, only one question, then just maybe inquire the board on another item. The body, the camera that you described and the communication to post, is that the standard procedure that is adopted for body worn camera, that if there is something that needs to be looked at, it goes to post?
No, so what happens is, when somebody has a complaint under the, under the new law, when they pass that police reform, you can complain to the police department and then we have to report to post if it's a complaint that fits in their need, in their purview. Or somebody can go directly to post, they don't have to come to us. So they can call post and say, I have a problem, I got pulled over and this is what happened. And then post will come to us and say, have you done an investigation on this? And most of the time, we are not aware of it because the complaint went to them instead of to us. In the, in the case where, where we were aware of it, if we had done an investigation, we'd send them over all of our investigatory paperwork. In this case, they made us aware of a complaint, we told them that the stop was all on body camera, there was no investigation on our end and there was no report, and we looked at the body worn camera when they brought it to our attention. We didn't feel that there was anything that needed to be, we found it as unfounded. And we sent it over to post, they agreed, they sent the letter out to the complainant and, and then the matter is done for, so.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And the second observation, just an inquiry to the board, we've talked all about dispatch. I'm wondering, and it's been a while since we've had the director of the Holbrook Center here, and I'm wondering whether or not there might be interest in a meeting, perhaps one where you gentlemen are here as well, and that the Holbrook Dispatch Director can be here, just, I don't know if we have any specific.
Only if we have to, they deserve for some money or something.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it's nice to see him.
We need to make a payment next year so we can all say, can you look for a way to mitigate that payment? Can you look for extra money? Anything to help the, help the budget?
But I also think it's also, it is an important function, I also think it's good that we have exposure and that folks in the community can, can see the director, it's a very good operation. I remember that when he presented to us, when we entered into the dispatch, it was a very impressive presentation, I think they did well. I just thought maybe there might be some opportunity, perhaps at a future meeting with the public safety chiefs here, that the Holbrook folks can be here and just, we'll see the whole public safety hierarchy, if you will, at the table for our edification.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd be happy to come. Yeah, he's, he's great.
Yes.
You know, the one other thing that I'll bring up is, you know, back to the Holbrook pieces, we did get that $9 million grant to redo our whole public safety radio system and that's been in process. And, you know, it's, it's taken a little longer than we had hoped it would, you know, but we just rolled out new portable radios for all the, you know, 90 portable radios for the officers. They're in the process of building out a digital system that's gonna help for police and fire, it'll drop off a lot of our dead spots. You know, so once that's completed, it's, it's gonna be, you know, that's that, that's that hidden bonus to the town in Norwood, right? A $9 million grant to build out our radio system where, you know, I think right before we went over there, we were talking about a $600,000 amount of money the town was gonna have to spend, that was really a patch to an old system that really needed to be revamped completely. So we'll be really in good shape when that comes, and, you know, they're, they're still waiting on some of the equipment and, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll get the towers and the installations. So in addition to the parts that they're buying for the town in Norwood, we're also gonna be able to, be able to hit off of their towers. So when we're in mutual aid communities, we'll still be able to communicate. I know the fire chief mentioned today that they were in Dedham yesterday. And, you know, that ability to communicate whether, you know, in our dead spots and in other communities is really, that interoperability piece is a huge benefit, so.
Great. Thank you, thank you. If there's no further questions for Chief Patton, we'll move to the fire department with Chief Bailey, welcome Chief Bailey.
Good evening and thank you. In 2023, we had 67, 64 calls for the year, which was 18.5 per day. Last year, we finished at 7,154, which is an increase, and we were 19.6 per day. To start this year off, we've, at 8:43, we're at 20.5. So our call volume continues to rise. And one of the things that's, I'm going to highlight that's happening so far this year is that we've had to call mutual aid ambulance in 95 times since January 1st. That is an exorbitant amount of times that we've had to have them in here, 71 times in January, 21 times so far in February. On the fire prevention side of things, last year was the first year that we were able to get some good data, but we were missed four months because that was when we started the first do program. We had 2,818 logged fire inspections last year. To date this year, we have 823, so the program is working. We've got a mandate out to try to get more inspections done and we are being very active with that, not only with the fire inspections, but what goes into that is all the inspections that are being done at all the construction sites by the deputy and his team, as well as pre-planning of all the businesses. We started with the downtown businesses first and we've been pre-planning the downtown so that in the case of a major event of any sort of type, that we would know where all the shut-offs were and, you know, be able to handle it in an expeditious manner, as opposed to be going down and having to look for them. So that is working out very well and that is ongoing and will be ongoing for quite some time. Firefighter Aronko has been very busy in the schools and with the seniors. He does a lot of this on his days off and on his own time underneath the grant that we received from the state. With the ambulance, the rates were approved, and thank you, back in December. Those will take about three months before we actually start to see the changes from the revenue change, because it takes that long because the cycle's behind a little bit. So that is in process and we'll wait to see what happens. Our pay mix for FY '24, just for informational purposes, was Medicare 54%, Medicaid 23%, commercial insurance 19%, and billing directly to the patient was 4%. That usually plays into the amount of revenue that comes in via the ambulance. On the training side of things, we're very active with the Blue Card ICS Training Program, which I had highlighted in the paperwork I had sent you previously. That is ongoing, the officers have to be done by March 7th with the online program portion, which is 30 to 40 hours of online. After that, we'll do a three-day, eight-hour, three eight-hour days of training with all of our officers in a simulation lab, which will be the final component of that leading up to certification. We also, I was able to attend the Deadly White Potter Symposium back in November at GLS Stadium, which talked about drugs and the effects that it has on EMS providers. Active shooter incident management class that I attended two weeks ago was a three-day class, it was excellent. It, it taught us to work with the police department on any type of incident like that and it was very, very beneficial. I've had a conversation with the chief on that as well. EMS rounds, we hold those periodically at the station. We also had classes on firefighting in different months, each month we do a certain training. This month, it happens to be ice-water rescue, that started today and will be continuing for the rest of the week. On apparatus and capital, a ladder one continues to be an issue and gives, giving us an issue. It was out for about three months earlier in the year, in the early fall, we got it back and then we continued to have issues, it was out for another two weeks. So I'm working up the pricing for that for potential of putting that in the fall, talking with Tony and working to possibly put that on for a capital. The reason being is that the time built out for a ladder truck is currently at three to three and a half years. We did order the engine that we received off the last capital last year, and the delivery date for that is December of '27 or early of '28. So it's, there's nothing quick about apparatus replacement right now. Ambulances are two to two and a half years. So I'm monitoring all of those issues at the same time and trying to figure out with the manager the best way to proceed with that. The grant, we received the fire safety equipment grant for $24,388.16. I've mentioned that before, we did finally receive it. We do have to have all the money spent before June 30th, so we're hoping that we don't have any procurement issues with getting the products that we were hoping to get. The grant was delayed a couple of months in getting out to us, but we are hopeful that we'll be able to get all the stuff that we were hoping to. Our recruit, Mitchell Sanchez, will be going to the Fire Academy on February 12th and graduating on May 9th. He'll be attending the Bridgewater Campus. Firefighter Paul Hanson has retired after 25-plus years of service. And last time I was in before you, we had five that were out on long-term injury, we now have two that remain out on long-term injury. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the chief? Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, we appreciate that. Related to the first stadium you mentioned with the increased call numbers, more of a question for Mr. Mizuko, but town meeting in the past had appropriated money for a staffing study. If you could provide an update for where that's at?
Sure, the Collins Center received the bid for it, they're working through their process, they're taking a little bit longer than I would have liked, but there was a problem right off the bat with the bid.
With the original?
With the bid, just bidding on it, but it's with the Collins Center and they're working on it.
And with, through that process, they're communicating with Chief Bailey and getting the information once that gets going. Is there any expectation of when that might be produced?
I'd like to see it, May or June, it's kind of been kicked around a lot longer than it needs to be.
Yeah.
One of the challenges is sort of, we don't want to ever forget about the hospital, but forgetting about the hospital and trying to study public safety staffing absent the hospital, particularly on the fireside, is a little complicated.
Sure.
Because, you know, and what we're sort of zoning in on with it is, our staffing isn't bad, like on fireside, before 15 firefighters per crew, but there's a couple of problems with that. One of them is, when you add up injuries, when you add up generational changes, that people aren't working the overtime the way they used to, is 60 bodies enough to staff four crews of 15? And the answer is probably not. You then look at our overall increase in call volume, it's been going up year of the year for a long time on the EMS side. That's a challenge, but it's hard to study in the context of the hospital not being here, because normally we would say, okay, you did an EMS run, it was 25 minutes. Well, now it's an hour, in some cases, before, while they're, they're out of town for that hour. So it's added some complexities to sort of not be too myopic, but we're not studying for no hospital either. So it's a bit of a pain in the butt. It's same on the police side, but less pronounced than on the fireside. In the budget presentation later on, you'll see just the cost estimate if we were at an ambulance, just in terms of staff, because it's a conversation we have to have, even if the hospital magically reopen tomorrow, it's really time to evaluate whether we appreciate our ambulance coverage given the number of call increases. And there again, the staffing's not bad, but if we want another ambulance, we're not just gonna reduce on the fireside. And I think as the board knows, where our staffing, where the ambulance staffing is And I think as the board knows, where our staffing, where the ambulance staffing is helpful is we have 15 firefighters to deploy to a major incident all at once if we need to. So that's why that, that additional ambulance staffing is important on the EMS side, but it backs up the fireside as well, because that's everything we can bring, bring to bear.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for being here, Chief Bailey. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, um, well, it's not a question. I was thinking about the, uh, the study as well. I was gonna ask you about it, not necessarily tonight, but now that it's come up. Who's, we have the consultant doing the study? I mean, last time we had a citizen group and so forth, the last study that we did. Um, so this is just turn it over to the consultants and they're doing it. And it's the Callan Center. I'm sorry to hear that. I don't know any community, any town I've spoken to, whether it's hiring or conducting studies, that hasn't had problems with getting the work done through the Callan Center. So I hope for the best there, but I start off already losing a lot of confidence in the, in the results. Mutual aid, you mentioned. I don't know that it means anything, except for the question came up in my, what am I? Ninety-something calls since the beginning of the year.
Ninety-five.
How to bring other towns in?
Correct.
How many times you think that's happened because we've been in their community? In other words, do they call us, so now we don't have anybody and we get a call?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
It must happen.
I can look into that.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I don't think it's important. It's just, I was wondering, the mutual aid, how?
Most of them are come, most of them are coming here and us not being there.
Yeah, it's, it's when the call's coming and everybody has to respond to them, so it doesn't really matter, I guess.
We are extremely busy with the.
Just kind of a curiosity thing. Thank you.
It's not uncommon for us to have two or three in here at a time.
Right.
Ms. Grow, Mr. Sad, any, anything for the chiefs, for Chief Bailey? Ms. Grow, uh, Mike first, we'll go to, Mr. Sad? Okay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chief, thanks for coming tonight. You, you and, uh, Chief Patten. It just seems like the numbers were getting higher. And as I said at town meeting floor, the more we build these apartment complexes, the more we have costs going up. I just, is there a correlation that we're, we're seeing with the amount of new apartments in Norwood?
I, I don't have any data for that, but if, if you have more units, you're, you're, you will end up with more calls. How many, I don't know.
All right, yeah, it just seems we're getting more apartments with more calls now.
It all depends.
We have more homes, but I want to thank you, Kev, for a great job and, uh, both ears, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Grow?
Uh, my question was also call-related, um, volume-wise. Just to make sure this is still correct, my impression is that the volume can be very directly attributed to the lack of a hospital, because we're essentially shouldering the burden of runs or activity where people would have just taken themselves right into the ER right here in town. Instead, they can't, and then our folks have to go out longer, and then because they're out longer, like, there's sort of a big ripple effect happening, and we're the ones sort of shouldering a bunch of that now. Is that correct?
I don't have data to support that, but I, it, it would make sense that some of the calls would have been driven or, or ambulated there in a different way, but, um, our call volume continues to go up. So it's, I, I don't know how that, it definitely impacts us because of the turnaround town and being the mutual aid especially. Uh, a lot of those calls in the past, we would have been able to drop off and then go get another patient, and then come back and then take care of the paperwork. So it's, it's a little bit, you know, that has had a big impact on it, so.
Can, can I just comment on that, and, and you can tell me if you agree? Yeah, I've been here for a long time. One of the things, you know, pre-hospital and post-hospital and pre-COVID and post-COVID is our mental health calls have gone through the roof on the police department. And a lot of time, they're being transported by the fire.
Correct.
Back in the day, when the hospital was here, we'd just throw somebody in the back of the cruiser, drop them at the ER. And so that's driving some of it, too. You know, we, we're not gonna, you know, when somebody's having a, a, a mental health crisis, now we're transporting them in an ambulance. And a lot of times, we're sending a police officer in the ambulance as well. So we're all getting tied up for much longer. But you also have a, a big increase post-COVID still, hasn't gone away. That's the one bump that we haven't had go down, um, that's driving a lot of our, our medical police response calls. And I think that these guys are dealing with a lot of that as well, so.
We are, and, and in talking, we, exactly. And, but in, in talking to my other constituents in, in the towns around us, they're all seeing the same increases as well, um, especially with those type of calls. But just in general, there, there, there are fire calls, there are EMS calls. The, the demographics of the area has changed from what it was back in the 70s because of growth, development, changes, that you can see it with traffic, you can see it, you can see it with a lot of things. So that all contributes to accidents, which we go to quite frequently with the PD, and, and just a lot of other calls. I, it just.
And I have to imagine now that, we didn't know what we knew when COVID first hit, and now we've learned a lot more since, the amount of long-term complications. And so who knows what kind of call volume we're gonna see as people have, you know, more cardiac events or more problems with diabetes, or all these different sort of emergent health problems that will crop up later. I think they went through something similar with like the 1918 pandemic, where the flu we know today started off as that pandemic, and that during the 20s, they had a huge increase in the survivors of that pandemic having these types of escalated health issues. So that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for coming in. It's always good to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. Chief Bailey, thank you for the information about the ladder truck. Um, last week, we did have the, uh, we had the first meeting of the year for the Capital Outlay Committee, um, kind of setting the stage for our capital improvement program for the coming fiscal year. And, um, Mr. Rosen provided us an update of the, of the various projects that we approved in, in November, FY '25, and the engine was one of them, and everybody noted that, that the delivery could be as far out as 2028 for something that we approved in November of, of '24. So that's, 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 that's quite the amazing timeline, and thank you for the explanation about, uh, about that. I appreciate it.
Just on that point, Mr. Chairman, that's why the ladder probably needs to come up this November. It's not scheduled for replacement at the end of its life cycle till, I think, '29 or '30. But looking at a three-plus-year window, um, it's not like we're just, you know, the days of approving it in May and having it within a year are simply gone. So it's not really a '26 project, but we probably need to approve it in '26 and figure out, um, how we're gonna patch along till '29 or '30.
Right. I mean, it kind of makes sense. I mean, if you're, if you're, if you have a ladder truck that's nearing the end of its useful life, you, you know, you want to be prepared to, to replace it in a, in a, in a more timely manner than four years. I get it. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any, uh, any final thoughts? Thank you, uh, Chief Bailey and Chief Patten for coming in here. Very, um, very good report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good night. All right, that, um, that was our final appointment of the evening. We will now return to the main agenda, and we left off with new business. We, um, we are at item 3.10. This is a one-day liquor permit for the Hometown Arcade. Um, submitting an application for a one-day liquor permit, um, for a hometown tour, for a Valentine's Day night on February 14th, Friday, 2025, the 14th, 2025, at Hometown Arcade, 61 Intercot Street, from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM, with approximately 50 to 75 attendees expected. Um, I'm not sure what HTA is, but, um, they are the, uh, the party that is scheduled to.
Themselves, Hometown.
Is it themselves? Hometown Arc?
Mr. Plasko, thank you. HTA.
Yes, uh, it's their date night event. I understand, um, just before we go any further, that, um, this license that we see before us indicates a, 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 a ti- a type of license as alcoholic. And upon, um, um, review and, and input from Mr. Plasko, they were contacted to be advised that for a, um, a private entity such as Hometown, that we would be only available to consider a wine and a beer license only. Any discussion? From the board regarding, this will be a one-time, one-time, uh, one-day license for beer and wine. Seeing none, I will entertain a vote. I'm sorry, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been, uh, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote will be called now. Um, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Moving on the agenda, we are now at 3.11. In my understanding, this is, uh, the adoption of, um, a voluntary vision insurance program for town and school employees. Um, my understanding is, Mr. Manager, we'll table this, that, for, uh, discussion and a potential vote at a future meeting.
Yes, that will be revised.
Okay.
Not ready for primetime, as they say.
No action. Motion, I'll entertain, Mr. Plasko has made a motion to table. Seconded by Mr. Lane. On the motion to table, any discussion? Return to a vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five-nothing. Item 3.12, addition of direct deposit to the May 12th, 2025 special town meeting. Mr. Mazuka, you have a recommend, you have information and background for us here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we're, as we're getting closer to town meeting, consistent with what the board has asked for in the past, instead of waiting till the very end and bringing the warrant in, we're gonna start bringing items in as they come in, so you'll see them over the next few, uh, items, just to get them out ahead of time. They'll, of course, end up on the warrant, assuming the board wants to go forward. This is one of the first ones. It is a small housekeeping item. Uh, our new audit firm pointed out, we have not adopted the MGL that allows direct deposit, uh, despite having done direct deposit since the early 90s. We polled a bunch of towns in the area. Uh, they all adopted this in the 90s or in the 80s, uh, except Westwood, which probably caused that they never adopted it. Uh, my guess is because nobody knew there was a local option to do so. It's been available for town employees. Um, I'll put it this way, we, we asked the town clerk, since she's a senior employee, has been with us a while, if she ever remembered a time not having it, and she said she didn't. Um, it's been mandatory for a couple of years in all of the contracts. So it's just housekeeping, but we'd like to put it on the warrant, just, uh, at the request of our auditors, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Mazuka from the board? Mr. Plasko?
Make a motion to, uh, include the article on the special town meeting, May 12th, 2025 warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lane has seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will proceed to a roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, five-nothing carries. Um, item 3.3, 3.13, initial draft of park regulations. Um, Mr. Mazuka, why don't I, uh, ask you to, um, re- review this matter with us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we're getting to the board a little bit later than we wanted to. We took a look at the existing park regulations. There have been some discussion because of the number of events that we've been getting. If we could take a look and come up with any recommendations for changes. Um, first run out the park, nothing on size and scaling of events, because the regulation is already fairly clear. We did clarify some language, add some additional, uh, stipulations here and there. So we took a run-through and are now presenting to the board for your review and any comments or suggestions or ideas. You have, um, we do have a quirk in the bylaw that should the board want to move forward with changes to the park regulations, it requires to be heard at two meetings. I do not think this would be one of those meetings. This is just us sharing some, uh, recommended housekeeping changes that we've made and seeing where the board wants to go with it, and if there's any specific, um, items that you'd like to see.
So at this point, this is, uh, for our review, we, um, we do, we will not be voting on it this evening, but it's an opportunity if anyone, um, wants to, um, make any observations. Initially, they are having opportunity to do that this evening. If not, Mr. Mazuka, it's probably, would you appreciate if folks had, uh, questions in advance of next meeting for this, to forward them to you?
I, I would, because if there are, if there's anything significant, obviously, that would come to the board for, um, discussion and sort of, uh, a policy analysis. If there's just some other smaller items, we can incorporate them into the changes, and those could become, um, recommended changes. Should that be the direction that you want to go in? Most of the changes that you'll see in green are just really tightening up the language and, and in some ways being up to as we normally are when we review regulations, where we add additional, you know, in this case, this happens X, Y, and Z.
Um, any, any comments from the board regarding that approach or any other thing on this issue?
That's a good approach.
All right. All right, so we will, um, everybody has the regulations. If you have opportunity to review them and have any questions, please forward them to Mr. Mazuka, and we will put this on our agenda for our next meeting for further discussion and, and, uh, potential vote. Item, um, 3.14 is a grant of easement for signature of the board. Mazuka, I'm having trouble locating my paperwork in this. Can you give us a brief description of this?
Sure, here's a copy if you'd like it. Uh, this is just the easement that town meeting approved, uh, at the last town meeting for Verizon Pole at the Coakley Middle School.
Ah, the pole in front of the school. Okay. Anyone want to see the easement document? It's here. Oh, you have it. I'm the only one that doesn't have it. Thank you. This, uh, this has been granted by the town meeting, um, previously. What is the pleasure of the board?
What's in here for us, just to sign it?
Move to approve and sign.
For signature of the board.
Authorizing, oh, we each sign it, not authorizing director chairman.
Uh, the board, it's a, it's a land instrument.
Well, um, we will, at the end of the meeting, we'll route it for a signature.
This has already been built, right?
Correct.
I didn't want to come in here now after the.
This is, this is approved at town meeting, and it's just the board finalizing the, signing off on the paperwork, because it's a land instrument.
Do you have a, a motion to approve a signature by the board?
So moved.
Mr. Lane, motions, and Ms. Grow has seconded on the motion to, for, to the board for signature. All right, a roll call vote. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna bring it up just as a housekeeping thing, but God forbid something so legal I end up affecting it. Uh, the chart, the, the diagram, it lists a couple of pieces of property as Town of Norwood Park Department. I do not believe the Park Department, I don't think the votes at town meeting purchasing those properties designated them to the Park Department. And if that has any kind of legal standing, we want to talk to the assessors and get that changed.
We will look into that.
Thank you.
And if you could just, if you have the, which ones you just outline them out.
Yeah.
Sorry, did I talk?
That's okay. So as I understand it, we have a motion that's been seconded. We'd ask Mr. Mazuka to look into the designation on the map. Otherwise, I think we're good to move to our vote, since it's been motioned and seconded. Roll call vote will now, um, for signature of the board of this easement. Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Mr. Sad, probably abstain from this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Understood. Um, the chair votes yes, and, um, it carries four, nothing with one extension. Um, item 3.15, this is a Verizon franchise renewal. Um, Mr. Mazuka, would you mind giving us the background, uh, on this particular, uh, item and your recommendation, please?
Sure, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe in our audit. It's time for us to start negotiations for our cable license with Verizon. We do Norwood Light and Comcast in 10-year increments. Verizon has, uh, requested five-year contracts, and it's actually time to start the process. It is quite lengthy. Tradition, and we've attached a copy to the board. Traditionally, uh, e- in the past, the Cable Commission would handle these. We've moved away from that, having a board member and the manager handle them. Um, it's less complex than it used to be in some cases, as cable is less of a, um, a consumer product now. Uh, my recommendation would be that the board appoint a member, perhaps Mr. Plasko, given he has experience with it, to, um, take on this task. Uh, perhaps assign somebody to shadow him in case the, somebody else wants to, um, become a little bit more familiar with it. And my office staff will provide whatever support is needed. Typically, I would jump in with it, but as we'll discuss a little bit later, given the recent news with the creation of a hospital task force, I anticipate that taking up a significant amount of my time in the next. amount of my time in the next six to twelve months, so I would be looking to, um, not add some additional commitments. We do have an attorney that we use, um, Bill August is his name, he does many of these, um, likely will use him again, we're gathering some additional, um, costs and experience of other attorneys, just to look at, uh, that option, but he's been through it many times, Mr. Plasko's been through it many times, and we can help with whatever everyone needs, I just don't know that I have the, uh, capacity to step in as I normally would.
Just to, um, write a little more edification, um, to that, um, your recommendation, and thank you for, for mentioning, I, I, Ms. Grow and I had a conversation earlier, and she has indicated that she has an interest to work with, um, Mr. Plasko and, and the attorney on this, um, on this, on this particular, um, franchise, uh, renewal, and, uh, I think that's great, I think it's always good that we have, um, sort of, the shadowing, uh, will be, I think, give us another board member who will, um, gain some knowledge about how the, uh, the, uh, process works going forward, and I've, uh, talked to Mr. Plasko, and he is, uh, satisfied with that as well. So with that as a background, I will entertain a motion pursuant to what Mr. Mazuko stated This will be a recommendation to appoint Mr. Plasko as the town's representative, assisted by Ms. Grow, for the upcoming negotiations. Mr. Plasko has moved the question, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded.
Uh, roll call vote on the motion, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that carried five-nothing, thank you very much. Um, the next item is FY twenty-six, general government budget presentation, and Mr. Mazuko, you have, uh, a presentation that you've distributed to us, and you also are putting it up on the, uh, presentation board, thank you very much.
That, I am...
Take it away, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we will go through this fairly quickly, um, as you know, it's quite a lot of slides, um, tonight, we're reviewing for the first time, there's no votes at the end of tonight, the general government budget, we'll talk about one or two of the shared costs, but this is just the, one of our three budgets, if you, um, consider that we have the, the general government budget, the school budget, and our shared cost budget, so this is just the town operating budget, uh, general government operating budget. So some of the highlights, salaries, as obviously are the highest budget driver, um, out of a forty-three million dollar budget, more than half of that goes to police, fire, DPW, engineering, and of course, snow removal's part of DPW. Uh, top expenses, trash coming in at three million, our IT systems, and of course, snow removal, our operating capital in the general government budget accounts for just one percent or under, and there's a slight decrease in road construction to meet financial targets. Um, the governor's released a budget proposing a new change to the chapter ninety formula, that being said, that change allocates an additional hundred million dollars to chapter ninety, however, they're not clear on what the formula is going to be, and whether it's going to follow the regular formula, so in theory, a fifty percent increase in chapter ninety money would lead to about, uh, four hundred thousand dollars for the town or so, but we don't know what that formula is actually going to be, we may not make out well with that formula. And, oop, sorry about that, my clicker doesn't want to work here. I do want to talk about health insurance costs for just a moment, because this is another significant bu- budget driver, the last two years, uh, last year and this year, it is killing us, we are looking at about a ten and a half percent increase in health insurance costs, if you look in the right side of that slide, you can see that's about two million dollars, that is more than our new growth, that's actually more than double our new growth, and it's almost the entire levy increase that we have in a given year just on health insurance. Just below that chart, what you'll see is the GIC, which is our insurance provider through the state, has gone up, uh, ten point five is the projected amount this year, last year, nine point three, prior to that, an average of around six, which is bearable, but still not sustainable. On the left-hand side, we've been, uh, chatting with other towns, and what they're projecting, and what they're looking at, what they're budgeting, you'll see with maybe perhaps one exception, uh, Maya, which is the same person we get our property and casualty insurance from, they're looking at anywhere from a fourteen to sixteen percent increase, uh, other GIC communities are where we are, some of the self-insured communities are, uh, not doing well, ten percent, fifteen percent, fifteen percent, so health insurance is probably the biggest driver overall at two million dollars.
Mr. Manager?
Yep.
Do you want us to hold questions to then, or ask as we go?
Um, you can ask as you go, or hold, no, why don't we hold them? I may, I may answer the question in the process, sorry. Uh, overall operating budget summary, salaries, operating capital, general fund going up five point five percent, or two point two million dollars. Sorry, I'm luring a new clicker here. We're gonna go through the department budgets, this is where I go through them fairly quickly, especially where there's not significant changes, so, um, definitely note questions, and we can certainly cycle back if somebody has any questions. You'll notice that, either with the slide or on the next slide, we have the FTE count and the position count for that department. Selectmen's office, nothing changes, other than COLA and STEP increases. General managers' office, same thing, salary increases reflecting contractual obligated, uh, COLA and STEP increases, which we'll talk about a little bit later in a slide. And general manager personnel summary, no changes. Finance commission, only a slight increase there, that is the expense for the auditor, and a small increase in the cost of the, uh, per diem stenographer. Finance department, again, contractually obligated, decreased operating a slight amount, headcount flat. The assessor's office, a slight increase in legal expenses, and otherwise, just their contractually obligated steps, um, plus if longevity is available, and again, we'll discuss that, uh, at the end, no headcount change. The town treasurer, a, uh, increase in contractually obligated items, uh, for the salaries. On the expense line, it's a little bit of a bigger increase here, that main driver is, uh, what we call the cost of collection, or it's the cost of our ambulance service collection, there's a few other items baked into that, this is one of those categories where we're trying to match the number that's, that is expended, but there's a corresponding revenue to, uh, to that number too, so it looks like we're spending an extra thirty thousand dollars, but that means that we're gonna collect an extra X hundred thousand dollars, so it's one of the quirks of trying to say, what's the general government budget versus, uh, what is it, um, what is it not, there's a revenue offset, and we'll call some of those out a little bit later. Treasurer's office staffing is, uh, of course, flat. No change to town council, so we're trying to be a little bit more studious about town council, we've been bumping this line up year after year after year, um, so while I'm always a little cautious, uh, going flat, we seem to be doing well this year, we'd like to try to go well into next year, we don't have our contractual obligations, uh, our contractual negotiations next year with labor unions, so that should keep it relatively, uh, low. Human resources, no significant changes, other than a couple of contractual obligations, the salary increase looks a little bit higher here, this is the full booking of the one FTE that was added last year, uh, budget balancing sort of agreed to it, but we booked that position for this year to start in November, to reduce the cost, but this is the first full year of that position. Uh, IT, the, other than the contractual obligated costs, a number of our costs are increasing on software, I think as the board is aware, we did away with the software we're using for your agenda, because the full cost ended up being over thirty thousand dollars, we'd gotten some grant funding, and we're seeing that with a lot of our software packages, where it's, it's coming in at eleven thousand dollars, and then two years later, it's, they want nineteen, and then twenty-six thousand dollars, and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we're, we're cutting software packages left and right, and trying to find cheaper options, there's another one we just dumped, that was about a seven thousand dollar cost that we think we found a two thousand dollar option for, but we're seeing that everywhere. The biggest increase is, of course, just Munis, which is our operating system for all town and school facility, uh, building, all town and school IT, um, or accounting systems, I should say, but that's a significant cost, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, so that will go up twenty or thirty thousand dollars in a year. Headcount neutral in IT as well. Uh, town clerk, and elections and registrations, again, projecting next year, we're really just seeing, um, some fibrillations as a result of what elections we intend to have, this will go up again when we have a federal election coming up in a couple of years. Personnel summary, again, flat in the clerk's office. Community development, just a few small changes, flat, we are including the capital acquisition that town meeting voted to add to the budget last year, um, if you remember, we had cut it out, and town meeting voted to put it back in, so we could certainly cut it out and have that, uh, battle on the floor town meeting, but somewhat, um, respecting their will, it's in there as a starting point, at least in the budget that we will present to the board. Community development, flat in the headcount. Annual town report, very minor increase there. This is the general government, um, sort of our catch-all budget, no changes there, we pay for some part-time seasonal staff out of there, as well as some of our, um, like our membership at MMA and things like that come out of there. Police department, here's where you're starting to see some of the larger increases, total increase of about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the police department is mostly driven by, uh, contractual increases in their salaries, this year is the, um, most of our contracts this year sort of had a bump this year, the non-unit, uh, the, sorry, the ASME contracts are getting a STEP, public safety didn't get that STEP increase, and we'll discuss that a little bit later, but this is the year that their full education incentive hits, similar to the fire department, which is why we're seeing the, um, size of the cost increase we're seeing for, uh, police and fire, uh, contractual obligations, and some increases in the police operating, uh, operating budget as well, um, to try to replace things that we've reduced in the, uh, in the past, but we'll talk about what the FinCom wants to see with those. Uh, headcount neutral at the police department. Fire department, we're seeing something similar, contractual increases continue to drive all of the personnel costs, and the operating increases up fairly minor, but some of those are contractual items, and an example of a contractual item that's not on the labor side, we have a maintenance contract for our, um, striker lift systems, those costs go up for those contracts, there's not a lot of vendors that do it, so we try to bake those things in, if we know we paid twenty thousand dollars the last year, and it's up to twenty-eight thousand dollars this year, we bake in the cost of the, um, the obligation. The fire department, again, um, flat, uh, headcount flat, we are gonna talk about what it would cost if we were to look at increasing paramedic staffing down the road. Building department, uh, no changes here, nominal increases for some of their gear and equipment, and otherwise, it's just their contractual obligations, because we all know the building department, the last couple of years has brought in, um, multiples of what their actual cost is, again, headcount flat. Emergency management, no changes. Street lighting, we are legally obligated to, um, budget for, we're just trying to adjust it to reflect spending trends, excuse me, and the traffic control and fire alarm, same thing, that salary is for overtime related to repairs, we're just trying to increase that overtime to get it a little bit more in line with what the actual expenditure Public works and engineering, no significant changes here, contractual obligations, staffing counts flat, same thing, uh, highway maintenance is down, snow and ice is flat, we've had this rough same number for snow and ice for five years now, we haven't had a bad winter, this winter is not a bad winter, but if we continue to get these small storms, it's costly, um, sometimes a four-inch storm, that's just slushy and messy, can cost us what an eight-inch storm can cost, but what a bad winter would cost us, it's really nobody's game, uh, anyone's guess at this point. Waste collection, this is the cost of the landfill, um, that annual monitoring ends up going up annually, and the landfill does generate a little bit of revenue for, um, some of the drop-offs. Unfortunately, trash, this is the third year of our five-year contract, projecting a fairly large increase there, uh, about hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we know that this trash cost is costing us, uh, quite a bit each year, going up five percent or north, based on what the year is, again, ultimately also based on our tonnage, so that number's subject to change. Parks maintenance and cemetery costs, again, contractual obligations, as well as some of the costs going up for our, um, contracted services and just supplies and services in general, we are trying to keep it as flat and as low as we can, um, it's just sometimes when we, we can absorb a cost increase somewhere, other times, if a service goes up ten or twenty thousand dollars, there's really nowhere to absorb it on a smaller budget. Public works, engineering and cemetery personnel, again, a little tough to read on this chart, because it goes to two pages, but the numbers are flat, we've not added DPW staff in, uh, probably twenty years, if that, and, uh, sometimes they, they feel that, bless you, I'd say most of the time they feel it. Airport, no significant changes here, the airport always sort of, um, comes in around flat. The health department, you're seeing a bit of a larger, uh, increase here, uh, we're not adding any headcount, but we did have some grant funding for several years that has been offsetting the cost of, uh, the second nurse slash sanitarian, and, um, we use it to offset our animal control agreement, um, but we have ended that agreement with Walpole, we're down to just two instead of three, um, but it was offsetting part of that, so there's no increase in headcount, but we're now fully funding, um, those salaries. Health department personnel, um, flat. Council on Aging, a bit of a bigger increase here, we did have a body being funded by ARPA, which has ended, that we're recommending, um, that be added into the budget, given the increase in needs here at the senior center, uh, we are, when we get to recreation, gonna be going down a body in recreation, so the overall budget is gonna be headcount flat, our headcount neutral, uh, we also have been funding the part-time drivers, first out of the transfer line that used to be in that budget, we continued that line for a couple of years, even after we ended the program, we then used some ARPA funding to do so, that's now, uh, run out, so this is fully budgeting for the part-time drivers and the senior center. So it's showing no change in headcount, but the budget is absorbing, um, that extra one that gets you from four point five to five point five. Veteran services, no significant changes here, uh, again, the operating number for the veteran services department is based on our chapter one fifteen program, as I always remind everyone, that isn't, it's an obligation of the town, so we adjust the number roughly to what we've been spending, but that number could go up in a given year, and we're obligated to spend it, we get roughly seventy-five percent of that back. Library, similar situation, uh, no significant changes here, other than, um, salary and contractual obligations, little bit of reduction on the capital to try to balance things out, the operating budget's up a little bit more, um, than we would want it to be, but we have to try to keep library spending in line with other departmental spending, if we want to make sure we're maintaining our, um, access to library grant funding from the state. And library personnel, uh, the only change here is, I believe, we're reflecting the CFCE coordinator under outreach services, which we're receiving some grant funding to offset most of, but that was the position that last year, the schools had asked us if we would take over the position, and we said we would make it happen, the grant itself pays for part of the position, and this year, thanks to the housing authority, we got a significant portion of it paid for, we're hoping to continue that next year, um, we're really only on the hook for less than a quarter of the salary, but when we talk about FTE or FDB, we're really talking about benefited positions, so we include them in our count if they receive Recreation, um, showing a decrease here, we've historically had four full-time staff at the rec, we've been up to five for a while, with a vacancy, my recommendation is we go back down to four, um, at the rec department, I don't know that we've gotten the value necessarily out of that extra body that we would have in the past, um, and the team seems to be doing well, uh, with that. We are making sure we're correctly using our revolving fund and charging what salaries the revolving fund should be charged, and what should be getting charged to the general fund, there's still some work to do there between camps and pools, it's always been a little bit, um, messy and nebulous, we can move more into the revolving fund, but then that takes the revenue out and moves it to the revolving fund, because we general fund our core salaries for our full-time staff, the benefit to that is, when we saw in COVID, where we had this shutdown, there were some towns that lost their rec department entirely, because they had no money to fund them. Camps and pools, we might be able to look at at some point pulling out entirely and putting them into their own revolving funds to see what the offset is, the challenge there is if we find out, you know, if you really look at it, if the pools lose four hundred thousand dollars a year, which I'm sure they technically do, um, what are we willing to lose, and do we run a separate fund if we know it doesn't completely cover, um, its costs, but just good discussions to have down the road. Uh, again, personnel summary going down one position, and it's currently vacant, so there's no loss of, uh, loss of position. Uh, celebrations budget, which is the Fourth of July and the concerts, no changes there. I want to talk a minute about the operating expense analysis, at the, uh, budget balancing meeting, the, the FinCom members pitched, uh, call it something they'd like to see from the town and the school, the general government and the school budgets, there were some parameters for the school budgets, I don't recall them off the top of my head, I think it was a position limitation, and a few other things, and then they said, on the general government side, they'd like to see contractual obligations, which we know we have on the personnel side, and then, um, trash goes up, they understood that, and then flat, otherwise. So we're looking at that, but we wanted to present this analysis, because if you look at some of the costs that are, um, here, these are also contractual obligations, now they're on the operating side, but again, the treasurer's expenses, we have postage and ambulance fees to collect the postage and ambulance, as those rates go up, and as we collect more, as we're busier, there's a cost there, so it's a cost that generates a revenue, our, um, software licenses that are going up, Munis is the biggest driver of that, we all use the software, uh, and again, where some of these costs are, these are significant to absorb, uh, same thing on the fire side, that increase I talked about in their budget, is medical supplies, we're using more of them, we're now a dual ALS, uh, ambulance system, so obviously, there comes a cost with that, but we are seeing the revenue on the other side as well, and that contractual subscription, I believe, is for the maintenance of our striker units. Uh, waste collection, again, the landfill, landfill does generate some money, that's the cost of monitoring, so it's not like we just choose to spend that extra eight thousand dollars on monitoring, that's the cost of monitoring, uh, the landfill, uh, and of course, trash on here, hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, contractual obligation, some of the rec expenses that are up are, we now have the, the haws will be fully open and running for this year, so that's about three hundred and sixty-five thousand of the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, or sorry, four hundred and forty So that's about $365,000 of the $440,000 expense increase, leaving about $60,000 of other items that we could certainly go and look at removing, but that's just further deteriorating some services. We did make about $109,000 reductions, pure reductions on a couple of items related to capital. So we are cutting our capital to try to get our budget to balance as is, just getting to the numbers we're at, at 5.5%. Just to talk about contractual obligations, because as you look through the line item budget and you see, well, we did a 2.5% cola. Why did some salary lines go up five or six or seven and some only went up two or three? Most of our cost of living adjustments for staff were 2% for public safety, 2.5% for everyone else. Public safety had some different offsets in there. Our step increases generally range from 2 and 3/4 to 3 and 1/4%. So it's never perfect. They're usually about 3%. Sometimes it's a little above, sometimes it's a little bit below. Public safety's range is different. It's larger, but they have fewer steps and it's usually over the course of their entire career. Whereas the non-union group, for instance, might start at step four based on experience and they're maxed out six years later at step 10. Sometimes longevity or education benefits factor in. So you might say, gee, this went up 4%, but they were at their top step. How did it go up 4% and not 3? It's possible somebody achieved a degree, somebody achieved some other certification, or there's still some longevity's built into a number of our contracts. And as always, there are some always items not found in unmet needs. We really don't present the budget we want. We present the budget we can live with and the budget we think we need. Software costs, this is becoming, as I mentioned before, a growing area of concern for us. They're skyrocketing and it's becoming really a really big challenge for us. Some of our community events rely on some really nifty fundraising that we're happy for, but they, a lot of them, whether it's the Fourth of July Parade or most of the concerts, we skate by every year and just sort of get through. So these events that rely on these donations, we're doing it, but we are not coming up with tens of thousands of dollars left at the end of the year. So one bad year of donations is going to really kill a lot of our events. Professional services, we still have that underfunded. Perfect example, the public safety staffing study, I think we allocated $60,000 for. We couldn't do a $60,000 study a year in general government. I mean, we'd have to pick and choose and peck at the different budgets. We're not going to get that fixed in a year, but it's something we'd like to. We don't have emergency management support or a budget that I consider to be adequate. Solid waste and recycling going through the roof. We used to have a part-time sort of solid waste and recycling coordinator. For a variety of reasons, we eliminated that probably. At this point, it's probably 10 years ago because I think it was a year or two before I got here. DPW has expanded considerably without additional staff. Again, there's a need there. If we added four, six or eight crew members to the DPW, there's a need there. IT is also an area where we're probably understaffed. When we're looking at down the road, could we create a single IT department combining school, light and the town? But that similar facilities would probably be good, but would require additional bodies to achieve. I mentioned firefighter staffing. We've been talking about it a lot. As an example, if you just wanted to look at the cost of adding four firefighters, which is roughly what we would need to run one ambulance, not counting the capital cost, not counting additional fuel and everything else, and there would be some revenue of offset. And not counting the benefits, you're looking at about $400,000. Throw those other items in there, it's probably half a million dollars or more for the body cost. If you want to factor in the recurring capital cost and everything else, it's close to a million bucks to add an ambulance. But if we look at adjusting staffing, just so everyone knows what we're looking at, four additional firefighters, we're looking at between four and $500,000.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
You say, talking about adding four ambulance, firing ambulance?
Correct, if we were to do that. I'm not proposing it. I'm just giving you the idea of if we wanted to add an ambulance, we probably need four firefighters to do it. We might need more than that. But if we just wanted to add four, one per crew, this is the cost.
It's going to be more than that.
Well, this is, this is, this is just, this is the starting point if we added one person per crew. If you're talking about adding an ambulance and we need to add a total of eight people, double the cost. But just to give you an idea of, this gets us basically, the reason we use four as an example, if we want to staff any department at one person 24 hours a day, it's actually four bodies to achieve that. So this only gets us to 16 per crew. Probably doesn't actually get us another ambulance. We might be able to run something during the day or something like that. So when we think, oh, 15, you know, wouldn't 18 or 19 per crew be great? Sure would. This gets us to 16 at a minimum cost of 400 grand. Throw in the other stuff, it's going up. Throw in the benefits, that could be 100 grand or more. So it's not to say we shouldn't try to do it at some point or look at it, but just so we're aware of what that actually costs, just to add one per shift.
But you would, yes, when we had the chiefs here, I mean, from a revenue perspective, I mean, we're losing revenue whenever it's.
Oh, sure. So an ambulance would probably require more than four firefighters to add one ambulance unless we looked at some model where we said, okay, we want to run an ambulance 10 hours a day when we're transporting. There would be some revenue offset. I don't know that it could cover the cost. I don't want to make that promise. And it's more, we don't mind mutual aid if the mutual aid was to a hospital in town. But it's still the same service level to our residents that whether you call in Westwood or Walpole, we're still driving into Boston, which is not what we want to do. But addressing this is going to be significant. Again, with that health insurance increase of over $2 million. We want to fix firefighter staffing? Boom, we can do it and have exactly what we would want. We're just going to find two or three million dollars to throw in the budget. Remembering that the total general government budget increase is, I think, $2.2 million. I did want to talk about what if we were to spend less or what if we were to cut the budget because that always comes up in question. So we're going to go through this and this is of course hypothetical, but I want to just walk you through how to read it. That change in the left-hand percent is if we went down a full percentage point. So right now, the general government budget as presented is going up 5.5%. So if we reduce that by one, went up 4.5%, what that cost would be. What you see in the right-hand side is what we would start looking at right off the bat. These are all the non-personnel cuts we would start to make. And you can see right there, we'd be losing some programs. It reduces our flexibility in a number of areas. We're always trying to be cautious of the budget, but as an example, we are going into cable negotiations. We know the budget can absorb that. If we really start cutting these items down, we're going to have to monitor that on a weekly basis as an example. We'd have to do some salary freezes. And I know things like, you know, an acting strict overtime control sounds good, but that reduces our flexibility. So when we need to pivot, when we have an event, when we have something going on, it's, sorry, we're not available to do that. And those are some of the services that residents come to rely on and have the most resident-focused impact. It doesn't get any prettier as we go further. If we said to keep the budget at 3.5%, which is a reduction of $860,000 from where we are, we would start looking at losing positions, looking at about some of the part-time positions throughout the town as well as full-time positions. And the reason is, if you look at the operating budget, it is simply not a whole lot there to reduce. When we look at a DPW fuel line, that's the fuel for the trucks. There's not a whole lot of fat to cut out of those items, which is why we very quickly get into bodies. But what if we were to keep going? What if the budget only went up 2.5% or 1.5% or 1/2% or we went down a percent? As you look in the right-hand side, you would look at the additional cuts that would mean and what it means for bodies. And each of these is building on the prior ones. So it's not like, hey, down 1%, four public safety positions, that sounds good. It would never sound good, but that's four on top of four previously, on top of four before that, on top of five other positions before that, and on top of all of these items. So we present this just to show that we always do look at the budget and if we have to go down, what are we looking at both immediately and down the road? I'll close with just some of the items on the horizon that we're always talking about. The master plan will come up at some point. There may be some things that we want to do as a result of that where there are directions we want to go in. The recommendations from the public safety staffing study, we know we have to address that. Of course, that dovetails into what's going on with the hospital and that presents a difficult challenge. In terms of capital, we know that we have some aging buildings. I didn't plan for the heat to have a problem to have this in here for a budget presentation, but we're in here because the boiler broke at Town Hall. We think it'll be up and running tomorrow. The downtown streetscapes, that project, I hate to rely on Mr. Plasko's memory, but when we did the brick, that has to be going back 20-plus years, reaching the end of its life cycle. At some point, we've got a plan for in four or five years, those, you know, the concrete and the brick that we have in the downtown area is going to have to look at getting replaced. I don't think there's going to be grants for that like there were in the past. We know we have some looming stormwater infrastructure that without the adoption of a stormwater fee, we're either going to say no, subjecting ourselves to the next flood, or we're looking at borrowing a significant amount of money. On the positive side, because it's not all new, the governor has refiled the municipal empowerment bill, which would add some additional local options that we could look at. That being said, it didn't really make it out of committee last year. And while it would be good for us to advocate for that with our delegation, I don't know that I would count on that as any relief at least anytime soon. So that's what I have. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about items in the presentation, the actual budget document, which we have additional copies here, whatever is the will of the board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, questions from the board? Ms. Grau?
Thank you. Mine's going to be very narrow, so if anybody has broader scope of questions, feel free. So I'm just going to start with one narrow question, which is, when you're talking about IT, the software is a service issue. That's the reality of that industry. They loss lead you with your initial offering and then they jump it up hoping that you'll not notice and then, you know, make a profit on their end. And then we can't afford to hang on to that. So with that said though, what's our ability to try to lean into open source software for some of our needs? Open source can't obviously cover everything that we would need, but how aggressively have we been exploring open source options?
Sure. So the challenge we face is the bulk of our costs are for our ERP system. And that's where we're seeing the major cost issues. We would use, diligence is probably an example of something that, great software, we got rid of it. I think the way the packet came out today was pretty good just using Google. So we're always using that. It just ends up being, it might be a public safety software where it's the software that records and stores their cameras. I mean, part of our problem is we have to use 8 million different software programs to do all the little stupid different things that we do. And some of them, particularly that are focused on a municipality, they'll be very quiet for a long time. And then all of a sudden, the stupid rec software goes from four to eight to 10 to 12. I don't, we can continue to look at what's out there for open source options. But again, the bulk of our cost tends to be with what's directly tied into the ERP system. And then some of the very specific, and we use a lot of, at the end of the day, niche software that just you don't find anywhere else. One of the conversions to Google, I think we used to use Zimmer was, if not open source was, that's a bad example.
There are challenges.
I don't know if I want to paint all sort of open source software with Zimmer's many, many challenges. But we're usually looking at enterprise accounts for a lot of what we're doing with JAX at the cost. I mean, Google even ends up being free for schools for the most part. We're, I think, 12 bucks an email account. Everyone has to have an email account. We're always looking at ways to cut it down. Sean will come down and say, these six people on this commission have never used their email. Can we get rid of it? And it's like, get rid of it. It's just trying to, it's playing whack-a-mole with what stuff ends up costing. We used to use Agora Pulse for social media posts. We're kicking them out in the middle of the year because they're up to six or seven grand and there's cheaper options that I know will end up going up to six or seven grand.
Count on Hoop, Sweet or Sprout or several of the other similar ones. They're in the same boat.
Yeah, it's that stupid whack-a-mole game.
And the other question I had was around, there's a line in there called data processing. Is that a third party charging us for storage of the data?
I think that might actually be, that might actually be the Munis.
That's what I was saying, bespoke management of the system.
Yeah, 100 years ago, it was data processing. Now that's our Munis rental charge. We actually don't use Munis. We're not in the cloud. We didn't go with the cloud at the time because it was a couple hundred thousand dollars in addition. And they still house, they still hosted everything in-house. They've switched over to AWS. So it might be more feasible, but we're still looking, like, we'd like to do it. We should do it. Couple hundred thousand dollars annually in the budget. You look at an already tight budget, yes, it's a shared cost. It's like, good lord, it's, it's, I should have went into software engineering.
It's pretty rough. And then another question was, and some of the layout of, okay, here's what it would look like at 1%, at 3%, at 5%. Are those all interdependent? Like, it's like, well, you couldn't do this one without doing these three behind it?
That's sort of how we would, let me pull it up. It's how we would scale it. If you said you wanted to go right to, you know, the 5% cut, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, we start cutting public safety pretty quickly because it's the bulk of our general government workforce. That's sort of the challenge. Sure, could you swap this around a little bit? You're going to end up at the same place very quickly. That's the, that's the challenge. There's just not a lot there.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
All right, that was my main questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Plasko?
Well, I didn't think tonight we're going to get into a lot. It's an overview. I have a bunch of questions that did come up, but I'm sure getting time to study it further and some further detail, there'd be even more questions. So maybe I won't get into a lot of specifics and just make a general statement that, in my personal opinion, we as a community, general government and schools, need to do a lot of soul searching as to where we are with our budgets. And we're already projecting that we would need about $9 million using stabilization funds, stabilization funds to do this year's budget. If general government and schools get what they've put together on their budgets thus far. And that just compounds going into the future years. And the longer we delay making some hard decisions and making some cuts where we can, the second third year down the road only becomes that much harder. And when we talk about, we might have to get to a place where we're cutting employees, cutting positions. Remember, they're not free. If we have a no hire, no fire and somebody retires, we can kind of get away with that. But if we have to actually cut positions, it's such a thing as unemployment every week day. So you cut five employees, you might actually have to cut eight. And I don't know the exact number, but for example, five isn't five. You need more than that to get the same savings. So it's not as easy as just say, oh, well, people have to go. And I think some of the things that are discussed, just to be argumentative. Legal, that's a phony cut. If we're spending that much money in legal, it's a very litigious times that we're living in. And if we can't find ways to stop people suing us and us suing people, then those costs are there. If we can show we've been budgeting $400,000 and only spending $300,000, that's one thing. But if that's what we're spending, cutting it makes no sense at all. Just going to have to come up with it later at the end of the year. So that's not a real cut. And also regarding council, previously you had mentioned that council sent an letter looking for an increase. Actually, we carried any increase here. And technically, we hire council, so we should be seeing that letter, seeing what they want for new fees. Make sure we're happy with them and accept those. Some other positions that are in here. I think you mentioned the community development, a small amount, seven grand or something.
10 grand for land acquisition.
I could see us cutting that. It's a small amount of money. But the state rep just got the chamber that we use that money for over 500, almost $600,000 in the budget this year. I don't know that they're penniless as they've been in the past and need our $7,000. So there's a lot more here. I think we need to start making cuts. I don't think we can go to the people. We have some programs that I consider duplicate, like we have two pools. That's wonderful when times are great, but when reality hits, we can only afford one pool. So we don't want to have no pools. We don't want to get to that budget two years down the road that we have to make such cuts that we have no pools. So we cut to one pool now. And if we position ourselves appropriately, then we can do some of those things you show coming up in the future. Instead of saying, oh, we can't do them. We can if we balance things today and project appropriately going forward. So it doesn't mean can't, we have to panic. Doesn't mean we can't still do things in the future. But it does mean that if we don't prepare for it today and don't look at it seriously. If we just worry about today and don't worry about tomorrow, then we're going to have problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Ms. Klein?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for putting this together. Like Mr. Plasko said, it's a lot of information and it will take time to digest it. I think one of the things that we've talked about before is, and you had mentioned it in the presentation, we do get these grant-funded positions. It's great, but it seems over the past few years, you know, we've been in a situation where the grant has ended, but we've wanted to retain those services. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying, you know.
It's really only happened with ARPA. That's the first time in probably more than a decade that we've realized. I mean, it happens occasionally. It's a much bigger school problem than a. Yes, that's what I was going to get to. Formula grants that way to fund it. And it's a challenge. You get used to it and.
And that's a tough problem for the schools too. And I think, you know, having discussions about, you know, do we have a policy for that? Or, and I know there's no hard and fast rule, but, and we have to look at them individually. But I think things like that, sort of along the lines of what Mr. Plasko was saying, you know, these are nice to have, but I think that we have to take a deeper look at the nice to have and look at is, if, can we provide the same level of services without those positions? And not to say that those people aren't doing a good job, but, and I think you presented it. I think that we have to look deeper and there's going to be some tough decisions to make or to present to town meeting. So, but yeah, lots of information. I mean, if we went through line by line, we'd probably be here for a week. But I appreciate you putting this together and your staff.
Mr. Sad, anything from you?
We'll continue to work for free.
I was going to ask for a motion for salary increase myself, but I guess that's not going to happen. But I agree with the Plasko. I think, I think maybe a subcommittee of two selectmen and maybe the manager or somebody just to go through, maybe look at each line item and see what's duplicate and what's can be cut and keep running the town the way it's efficient. So I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of areas that you look at, but there's a lot of areas that maybe we can cut out a few things that can, you know, cut twenty here, thirty there, a thousand and help out versus cutting four public safety positions or four other things that we need in this list there. But I'd like to be on that and see, you know, go through like they're doing in Washington and see what is really in there and see what we really need. But yeah, there's a lot of information here for us to dig digest. And we need to look at it hard, as Matt would say, and Bill, and see where we have to cut because I think the hard times are coming.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko, for the, for the presentation. Mr. Plasko mentions that, you know, we're operating at a fairly significant deficit going forward. And even the most severe cut that we have up on the board right now is, is, is the 2.5, 2.6 million. So that, that doesn't go a long way. I know that's, this is just, you know, at best forty percent of the, the total operating cost of the town. But, so looking at your chart, the other discussion point I think we need to consider is looking at each of these scenarios, the four, minus four percent means we cut four public safety positions, minus five is another four, and another four to get to minus six percent. And I think there's a lot of information that we would need to, to go through in terms of what is the impact to our public safety program. We had the chiefs here earlier today. We know that we're running, you know, ninety-five mutual aid calls coming into our town for, to help us out. That would, that probably be more exasperated if, if we were to, you know, we have to look at public service in particular, public safety rather, in terms of what is the impact to public safety by the, by, by, by cuts in that department. Now, I will recognize that they are the, the largest component of our personnel budget in the general government. You know, I'm not a really big fan of the smaller items here, the holiday lights and the concert committee. However, you know, we, we still are sitting on a good amount of free cash and perhaps there's some innovative thought that we can have there that we could use components of free cash going forward to fund those, those programs for one year until they can get their feet on the ground in terms of finding alternate funding. I'm curious as to the, the, the one item that we talked about earlier in closing town hall on Fridays, where do we get, where do we get the cost savings from that? And how would that, how would we go about doing that?
A combination of some hours reductions, some reductions in the overall utility costs of running the building, going from occupied utilities work, going from occupied to unoccupied. It's a reduction in service, but it's probably an area that we can look at, make some reductions and reduce the overall service model.
You'd be able to kind of like, perhaps we, we have some information before us and I haven't seen, but you'd be able to kind of like give us a figure of what, closing on town, town hall on Friday, how much of that 433, 194 that's on that, that potential fee?
Yeah, I think the number we, we looked into, the number we came up with was maybe twenty thousand dollars. So there's not, not one of these things that it's, oh, just do that and we're, we're good to go.
Right.
Short of doing a trash fee, which is not what anyone wants to do.
Just one more comment on trash fee though. Let's go, so it, it, it's a double edged sword. The, the trash fee is going at eight, eight percent by contract, which actually is a lower reduction than we, than the lower rate increase that we had the last two years, which were like between seventeen and twenty percent. But it's an eight percent increase and it's still, still a whopper of addition to the budget. So I'll end with that. But yeah, good information, lots for us to consider, particularly enacting some of these, we really need to pay attention to the, the impact of the services. Because it seems to me that we certainly would, would, would see a, um, impact to the services that we currently provide. But that's what we need to do. We need to do it. So thank you. Ms. Grow?
Thank you. One thing I want us to be conscious of is when it comes to some of those little things, you know, sometimes you'll hear people pick around a theory like, oh, if you just didn't buy a cup of coffee, you know, every day for a year, you'd save so much money. But if you actually add that up, even if you're buying like a ten dollar cup of coffee a day for a whole year, that's still only like a fraction of a percent on the debt of your house. So it's not really, so then what you have is debt and you're miserable because you're missing that. I don't know. So I want us to be conscious of where are we making changes and reductions and cuts that are meaningful, like they're actually biting into the problem versus what are things that feel emotionally like we're doing something, but functionally, mathematically aren't really making much of a difference and they're just making the residents miserable in conjunction with the costs.
Yeah, the, the challenge there comes, I agree with you. We, we try to cut everything before you cut people. And it's catch 22. So you go to somebody and say, thank you for serving us, but we're, you know, we're picking the parade over, you know, somebody's job. So you try to cut everything, but there's just not a whole lot there. And again, we're, you know, we're always trying to be more efficient. We're always trying to prune things. I used fuel as an example earlier. You can try to see where you can tighten up. At the end of the day, if we, the DPW's fuel budget is the fuel budget, it's what's being used. You can't just say, well, reduce it forty percent. Well, we'd love to, but you know, the trucks have to drive a certain, you know, a certain distance.
Yeah. And, you know, that's why I pick on the software thing, because being kind of in similar places in the private sector where we're like, eh, I know we usually like to use this brand, but you know what? Right now, we need to switch to this alternate option that's not as good or feature rich, but it'll let us limp along for a while.
I, yeah, I see where you're coming. We, we're usually picking the cheapest options. We're switching the reporting software that we use because we picked the cheapest one possible for, like, reporting bottles and stuff. And it didn't work. And munis was willing to give us something, but they'll just jack up the price for it.
Yeah. The other thing I think that we need to be considered of too, and this is probably when we start kind of whatever decision we make here, start plugging into our longer term forecasts, is that, you know, we do have some things coming up over the next few years that are, that are, that we need to be aware of. Next year is the first year where I believe the dispatch cost will fall on us as opposed to the state paying for it. So there's a lot to chew on here. There's a lot of information that needs to be, be considered. But thank you very much for the information. Are there any final comments? Mr. Mizuko, what is the timing for final budget preparation? What are the steps now in terms of going forward to town meeting?
Budget balancing still hasn't made a final determination. They're meeting again in a couple of weeks. For whatever reason, the state is late with their health insurance numbers this year. They were supposed to be out on the sixth. They're not having a final meeting until the twenty-seventh, so we'll know after that. Retirement is running a little bit late. It's really whether or not budget balancing, and there's a meeting scheduled. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have the date with me. But to decide what model we want to go forward with, last year we projected a six percent increase is what we thought we would need. We've been able to draw on the general government budget. We've been able to drive it down to five and a half. We've got to look at the model that Alan pitched last week at budget balancing to see how that would work and what that would look like. And then the board's going to decide, you know, realistically, is there a number you're trying to target? Is there a service level you're trying to target? Do you want to go with that? Do you want to not go with that? We're usually having sort of formal approval sometime in March, which is probably when we need to have some formal approval, just to be able to get the warrant and get everything done.
Right. Yeah. Also, you know, to produce the information needed for the town meeting in, in May. Right. So there is a specific timeline. Well, thank you very much. Any final thoughts, folks? All right. Then we'll move on back to the agenda. Item 3.17, this is a letter to Representative Rogers amending an act further authorizing the appointment of retired police officers as special police officers in the town of Norwood. Mary Lou Folon, town clerk, presenting this. And Mr. Mizuko, can you give us a recap of this particular item?
Yeah, this was just approved at town meeting in November, and this is just the formal approval of the board to send it off and begin the process of the special act getting put through. As you know, these are usually a twelve, eighteen, twenty-four month process.
Who signs this letter? Do we, are we, we actually?
Tell me you approve of the board. Always.
We have the warrant that was filed.
Sorry, but it's not just supervising.
Yeah. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Grow. On the motion to approve the letter to Representative Rogers, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well. We move on to cemetery deeds. May I have a motion?
Motion signed.
Second.
Mr. Plasko's motion, Mr. Lane has seconded. On the motion for signature of the board of cemetery deeds, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five, nothing. We move on to now memorandum.
File one and two, four one and four two.
We have a second.
Second.
On the motion to file, Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We're now into managers update.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to cover the hospital update. If you give me just a moment here. All right. That didn't do what I wanted it to do, but that's okay. We will figure it out. Just an update, I think, is obviously, the board is certainly aware. We had a meeting a few weeks ago. There's been more activity with the state in two and a half weeks than two and a half years in the hospital, which is a good front. What we learned a week and a half ago on Thursday, the governor is willing to work with us on a task force. She released this statement, which we put out as a press release. We know that Norwood and the region rely on Norwood Hospital, which has been left in limbo for years due to flood damage and steward's mismanagement, said Governor Haley. Welcome to creation of this working group and look forward to collaborating and work in this work to ensure access to high quality healthcare in Norwood and the region. So I think we've gotten what we wanted to start, which is the state saying, you're, you're somewhat on your own, but we'll support you as you look at this behemoth task of trying to get a hospital back in Norwood. This is the text, I know it's difficult to read, so I won't have a pop quiz on it, of the actual press release that we sent out and includes the governor's quote. Her staff reviewed the entire thing. They approved all the language that went out. So we're, we're working in concert with the Department of Health and Human Services, the governor's office, and other regional partners, certainly Representative Rogers and Senator Rush, as well as Congressman Lynch have been instrumental in getting us here. So the task force that we're going to be putting together is in the process of being formed, similar to what Neshoba Valley and Kearney have done. Our issues are different, so ours is going to function a little bit differently. It'll likely be a one large group with two to three working groups in specific areas, hospital operations, medical services, care. And that's based on advice from the state and some lessons learned from the Neshoba group. The Neshoba group ended up being, I think, a little large and they struggled to get thirty people, you know, in a row at one time and getting them doing a lot of things. It then came down to trying to break out in some areas and, you know, nobody wanted to break out into an area. They all wanted to be part of a group. So learning from that, there will be some statewide and regional organized labor represented. The state was very interested in making sure we did that. We're going to try to get some of the large businesses in the area. Of course, fire EMS and public health will be represented. The Norfolk County chiefs have already nominated Tim Bailey to be their representative, so we don't need six fire chiefs on there. We have one who can represent them. Same thing, we'll ask Stacy, for instance, as our public health director, since it's a regional group, but it falls on us to take the lead to represent this regionally. There'll be a few other bureaucrats from the region trying to make sure we have people from the western part of the Ketchikan area and the southern part of the Ketchikan area, some folks with hospital and medical background. I've had a lot of folks reach out to me. But that will likely be its own sort of working group chaired by somebody on the main task force, if you will, just because that need will come in at different points in time. And certainly we're thinking that all of our elected officials at the delegation would be ex officio members if they don't want to actually attend all of the meetings. And, but certainly would be welcome. We haven't had anything scheduled yet, so we're still working on that. Based on what we, our analysis of what we need to do and what some of the other task forces drew, task forces did, is it's really a two-fold mission. And we did speak about this last Thursday. The first is, we do need to look at the current conditions, the needs and the impact. That's likely going to be data heavy. We're going to start with the emergency response. It's the easiest data we have available for towns that are diverting. What EMS calls have they gotten in the last couple of years? Where has that call volume been? What have they been and where have they had to go? As well as the timing impact of additional drives. So we'll need a little bit of help when we, when it gets there. We can sub some of that out because we've got to pull together twelve or fourteen different EMS systems. We also want to start working with and liaising with potential operators. There's no reason that we have to spend nine months studying a problem that we know in Norwood, what the answer to the problem is, the answer to the problem is. It's a new, it's a, an acute care hospital. But as soon as we have a meeting of the minds between an operator and the property owner, there's no reason that we wouldn't then be expediting any data work we're doing and then going collectively to the state saying, okay, we're ready for a new determination of need. Our goal would be an emergency determination of need to work with that operator. There may then be a phase down the road, having a look at different financing models and how we can make it happen. But we're not there yet. So it's sort of, we've got task one or mission one, and then mission two is going to be a little bit more informal, but proceeding as we can. As soon as we get somebody in who says, we have a deal with Medical Properties Trust, we think we can do this happen, we'll meet, we'll, we'll sort of go from there. If it sounds like a little bit this is being made up on the fly, it's important to note that, I think that might just be for our executive session. If it seems like a little of this is being made up on the fly, this doesn't happen in Massachusetts and most of the Northeast. There's not a textbook or a class on how to get a hospital to make a deal with a property owner, new determination of need, opening a hospital from scratch. It does not happen. So we're going on best guesses as to what to do and how to make it happen, but there's no playbook out there for this. So we'll probably be pivoting at a few different times, but it's not a, it's not a definitive, easy solution. It's not easy to begin with. Our website is live. It needs a lot of work, so please don't be critical of it, but we've launched it. We're going to be putting a lot of data on there. FinishTheJobNorwood.com. Let's see how tech savvy I am. Hey, it actually worked on there right on the fly. I'm shocked. But anyway, our, our site is live. There might be some additional information in here that's not yet accurate as we've been building this, but we wanted to get it out there so we can start building it. I have since lost my PowerPoint. No, there we go. Give me one second. And there's also still going to be a need for a large community organizing effort separate from the task force because we need to make sure that the state hears, hears regularly and that we're documenting regularly the need beyond just the health data. So we are going to need folks to help out. And some of our staff have already volunteered to do this and organizing different groups across the entire region. So veterans across the entire region, seniors and councils on aging across the entire region, school departments and parents in school age children, as well as small businesses. We need the local labor unions. And of course, with both some boards, a selectment of boards of health, at some point, there's going to be a need for formal written statements from all these groups to document the need and the urgency. And we want those words in any letters of support that go forwards. And what that's doing is two things. One, it's making sure that the Department of Public Health and the Health and Human Services Department hears that, knows that, understands that. And when it comes to that determination of need process, if we get there, we're going to want to make sure that's expedited as much as possible. And some of this will help feed into when the hospital has to prepare that determination of need. Similar to last Thursday, I'll pause here for questions. To the extent that we have answers, I am not 100% certain.
Questions from the board. Ms. Grow?
I know you said you're still populating the site, but do you want the public starting to look at the site tonight?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. That's why we put it out there. People can say, hey, check it out. If you have any suggestions for what should be on it, we're going to be loading up content in coming weeks. But we didn't, we didn't want to wait till a point where it was perfect because it's not going to be perfect. It's going to grow over time. It's really a shell. There's six or seven things you can click around on, but we want, you know, we want it to be people's homepage. We're going to be getting some pins and some banners and stuff like that. This is where we're going to be driving a lot of that information.
And then to repeat for folks that might be viewing this later, URL again for that?
Yep. It is finish, let me get the URL right because I'm going to tell people it's wrong. FinishTheJobNorwood.com.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I would, Mr. Plasko?
No, I was just going to say, obviously you've got a long way to go and there's no blueprint, as you pointed out, to, to what to follow necessarily. I think the, my gut feeling reaction to the membership and everything is that it's pretty good. I think we need savvy people, people with backgrounds, people with experience, people with financial connections and state connections. We, I hate to say it, but we don't need me. We don't need Joe Smo, who means well and is willing to put in a hundred hours, but doesn't have what we need in this particular case. This isn't studying whether we change our trash or not. This is more high powered, if you will, more higher level. And those are the kind of people you have to be going. we have to be going for. So I think the outline is good. Let's see what we can do to get it filled with the right bodies, but the outline is excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
I agree. So I know, good work so far, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Mr. Sad, any comments?
Yeah, I just got, Tony, I heard rumors, the electricians and carpenters might be, electricians and plumbers going in there. Any news on that, on the inside?
I haven't heard that yet, so I will let you know as soon as I do. I mean, there's still, there's still some of that work going on as a result of the shell. The shell should be completed March, April-ish. I had a call with MPT this week. I told them they should really complete the garage next. They said that's probably $10 or $15 million, and I said, sounds like a good deal, and they should really do it to keep construction moving. I don't know if, it sounds good to me you should do it as a persuasive argument, but we're gonna see what we can get them to continue to, to invest.
The other, the other comment, Mr. Chairman, is I think we need that primary task force and some, as Bill says, big hitters on there, Jonathan Kraft, Bravestreet, work our way down. And then also, Mr. Manager, I think, and Chairman, I think we need a secondary task force to spread that whole thing out, to get more people into the tent from all different towns and different areas and just put a lot of heat on this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Sad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. Kind of echo what the, what the members have said. I appreciate the efforts you're making. I noted here that we've talked about people from the region, the community, we've talked about labor, elected officials, business savvy people. And I know you're working on it, and I know you'll keep a surprise, but I think one of the big, big elements here in terms of skill set, competencies, needed for here are, are those folks that have the knowledge and experience of hospital operations and finance. It's a big, big thing for us, somebody who can, we can have great business leaders, but we need to have that person or those persons who really know the ins and outs of how do you finance a hospital this size? How does it, you know, what are the operations? In addition to, you know, sort of the healthcare specialists, MDs, specialists, DPHs folks that really can, can advocate for, you mentioned the emergency determination of need. You know, we have the 2021 determination of need, the state approved, and, you know, those are the folks I think that are best equipped to continue to advocate for those needs and be able to speak the language that I think DPH needs to hear. So, and I trust, and I know you will, that, that we will, you'll continue your due diligence, putting together folks for this task force. You've done a good job so far, and I appreciate the, I think what we should do as a board is, is when you have done it, keep a surprise of how it is going, and let's have more updates going forward. And if there are, there are individual input that the members have to assist in this process, please, please go directly to Mr. Mizuko. So thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Mizuko?
I will hold here as the hour is late and we still have a double executive session.
Okay. Then we will move into selectmen addenda. Why don't I start the way I was roll-calling the votes? Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The only thing I have for us tonight is, I meant to have a physical copy, but in the chaos of the mood. We will be circulating what's proposed as the final language for the goals and objectives. This basically translates what we'd sort of napkin mapped down into the final language that we would use. Yes, thank you. So I will get copies to everybody. I can send them an email. If anybody needs a physical copy, let us know. Actually, if you have a...
I think I have them here.
All right. So anybody that wants a physical copy, you can take one tonight and try to get us any feedback on any edits.
Keep that...
Thank you. Any edits that you might have before the next meeting. I only had two questions about language, but I think what I'm gonna do is just save those questions for a sidebar essentially for next time. I'll just send the feedback directly to the chair and then...
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Grow.
Cover it next time.
Yeah, Mike, I, Mr. Sad, I'll email you a version of this, just very briefly. It's just a matter of we, we, Mr. Plasko and Ms. Grow worked on joint goals and objectives, and they are listed there in one column, and the other column is just some ways and means in terms of language that we might state them in a more specific goals and objective manner. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. Anything else?
That's it for tonight.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Sad, but boy, this is great. Mr. Sad?
Yes.
Two quick things, and then we'll move on. February 4th, we had our first Capitol Outlay Meeting. We will be seeing a recommendation from the Capitol Outlay Committee for the Springtown Meeting. The Springtown Meeting, we consider for Capitol Outlay School IT requests, and they have come forward. It's the only non-November Fall Town Meeting request that we do have. They are requesting some IT purchases of computers for the high school, and I will get that detail for you certainly well before we need to put the articles together for[1690.88]